Alrighty, let me know when you have everyone in.
Everyone is in.
Okay, good evening, tonight's Monday, June 7th, 2021, regular Board of Ed meeting. Called to order with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Ms. Beaver is gonna do that tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, and with that, we have roll call, please.
Okay. We'll start with Deborah Ott.
Here.
Beth Scott.
Here.
Gloria Thompson.
Here.
Crystal Beaver.
Here.
Rebecca Shambless.
Here.
Mark Holcomb.
Here.
Cindy Holder.
Here.
All present, we have quorum.
Alrighty, next is public fundamentals. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting, a period of time known as public comment, is set aside at each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the Board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak must be acknowledged. Comments are limited to three minutes, school employees will not use this forum to discuss job-related topics. The Board of Ed accepts comments made during public comment from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources that the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. And with that being said, do we have anybody that wishes to be acknowledged?
Yes, me, Crystal Whitley.
Okay, hang, hang on. Are we ready, Mary?
Yes, we are. I have four hands up. I have, we can start with Alicia Robinett.
Okay. Alright, Alicia Robinett, you have the floor.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm having, there we go. Okay, I'm, tonight I'm speaking on behalf of Steve Bazler because he couldn't make the meeting tonight. Good evening, my name is Steve Bazler, I live at 26377 Cousins, Madison Heights, 4071. Good evening trustees and people in attendance, I would like to shed some light on a couple of topics tonight. One, the roof at the high school. After almost three years of the Board and Superintendent have known about the roof leaks, they have only recently decided to do some patchwork in February, I believe. Then when photos of leaks in ceiling tiles were released to the public, June 1st or 2nd, a letter was sent out by Superintendent, June 3rd, to say basically that the photos were false and there isn't any issue. And furthermore, the public could tour the facility approximately one week later. June 4th, people were on the roof. Why schedule a week later? Is it because that will give you time to change some ceiling tiles and spruce up the affected areas? Let's not confuse effort with results. Two, there are a couple of trustees who have sat on the Board who have brought nothing to the table in almost three years, yet they act like they are doing a superb job. These ladies are driven by their egos. They claim and have stated, "We are here for the children" on numerous occasions, but the way they vote on topics tells us otherwise. Since the only thing you have contributed to the district is the demise by chasing families away, it's a no-brainer, you should probably step down. These two ladies also have voted no to bond proposals that the district desperately needs for infrastructure repairs. Gave the superintendent a highly effective rating twice. The first rating was from numbers produced the previous year, which were Mr. Speck's numbers. You couldn't possibly evaluate on the couple of months after Mr. Speck. This shows complete incompetence. Remember, perception is reality. The surrounding districts are thriving and our district has taken a backseat. We are losing teachers, administrators at an alarming rate. Our district has four buildings and we are losing two administrators. I wonder why? Could it be the conditions of the building or lack of programs offered? Could it be the way they are treated by their boss? Or maybe a lack of pay compared to neighboring districts? Instead of overpaying the super who is failing miserably, maybe we should be sharing the wealth with our educators and administrators.
Hold her.
Have, ma'am, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm in, it's my three minutes, I'd appreciate if you didn't interrupt me.
You have about thirty seconds left.
I'm, I'm good now, but I would appreciate when you're speaking that they don't interrupt us, that's rude.
Okay, thank you. And next, I'm sorry, Ms. Kennedy.
Hold on one minute.
I have Annalee Bazler.
Mary?
Yes?
Crystal keeps raising her hand, but she don't have it pushed on the, her hand up in the computer, so don't forget her too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Annalee Bazler, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board of Education, I would like to start this off by saying, as a student in the district going to Madison, I am extremely disappointed in the lack of effort put forward in making sure the high school is under the correct conditions for us to be attending every day. There's been mold on the ceilings due to leakage not properly being repaired, or leakage shut the schools on rainy days, and even sometimes days when there is no rain. Even staff sees a problem and finds it quite disgusting. As a student, I come myself informed during the election and briefly remember a few now current trustees running together stating that they would not be passing bonds due to raises in tax dollars. That does not make sense to me since Madison District has the lowest tax prices in Oakland County. But as a student, I won't, I don't understand why the school board wouldn't want to provide students with a safe and clean environment. Some students deal with asthma or allergic to mold, so the moldy ceilings not being taken seriously would be endangering students' health. I'm sure most of you have kids. As a parent, wouldn't you want your child to go to school without fearing them having an asthma attack or an allergic reaction due to ceilings not being taken care of? If you cannot take care of a building the correct way, simply shut it down. This leads me to the next thing I would like to talk about, AC units at the high school. Each teacher has their own personal AC units, although some of them cause an outage leading teachers to have problems connecting to the Google meets for the virtual students. With this happening, the teachers who have that problem are forced to keep the AC units off in order to be able to teach class for virtual students. This is also a problem for students who struggle with asthma. Not only do they have to wear masks on hot muggy days, making it harder for them to breathe, but they now have to worry about the mold. Now, obviously, there's nothing we can do about masks at the moment, but as the Board of, Board of Education, I do expect something to be done for the students for once. I would like to end this by asking any Board members who currently do not have kids in the district, would you send your children to Madison High School knowing the conditions we attend school in? That's all.
Thank you, and next up, Mary.
I have Amy Lewis.
Hey, Amy Lewis, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Board of Education. I've lost my voice over the weekend, but I hope you can hear me. You stifle others and don't hear their voices. You stand mute in discussions. You want forty-five for your choices. What's your reason? The season? Or the message even? How can you be involved when no issues are solved? You should be there for the care and not simply the stare. You should listen to the public, the subjects, the upset. Who are your stakeholders? Who do you vet? If education is key to advancing the world, why don't some of you give it a whirl? Research and read, due diligence is needed. These students are seeds. They are flowers, not weeds. Is your lack of ability something we must accept? Do you expect your constituents to ignore your inept? How are those skilled trades? How's that time theft evolved? How's those goals, those bylaws? Have you got anything solved? A group that excuses, refuses, ignores, and abuses with a super who plays favorites with ones he just uses. Understand that many who watch and observe are smart enough and wiser and think of lack of skills as absurd. The intentions, intentions are far less than super. He says entrust him, yet he deceives your whole group where lack of empathy or understanding. It's the way that he rolls. The exodus is having, happening, it's taking its toll. Parents are frustrated, kids crying at home, but your tone has shown they're all on their own. Ask Berkeley, Lampheer, Royal Oak and HP, and you'll hear why Madison kids are moved there to succeed. And the reason none of you know of these things is you've shown you ignore and prioritize your own needs. So if you don't have the passion or drive or abilities we seek, you're simply dead meat and really, give up your seat. As for him, he's certainly not one of the best in our state, and as voters, well, we can see our mistake. It's that we have Board members and a super with nobilities or drive, a district of hypocrites, and that's through our students' eyes. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. And next up, please.
Crystal Whitley, please.
Crystal, you have three minutes.
Thank you, I would like to address you guys about what's going on with my brother in the school here. I understand you guys have a rookie, leaky roof and stuff, everybody's been sending everything to me, but I want to talk to you about how they forgot that my brother is autistic. And Mr. Hernavage had, we gave him the paperwork and he also destroyed it.
You can't use any names here.
Okay, well, you're, one of your colleagues have gotten rid of the paperwork and now my brother has to suffer, go back to school for a whole another year. And when I call the Board of Education or the school, I get pushed around, or my mother gets pushed around. I want stuff that, I want it to be handled the right way. Not sit here and tell me that everybody's gonna call back, or this or that, or people on the Board that actually don't give a crap about our children's education. I give a crap about children's education. I went to Madison, I know how bad Madison is. I had siblings that went to Madison. That roof was worse than, more than three years. I can tell you that because I went to Madison. Nothing's being done, that you're, you got teachers that's telling parents, "It's above my prairie to help your children." That's uncalled for, it's not very, I mean, it's not nice at all. I'm here to defend my brother and my mother because we have called you guys, we want answers, want to know what's going on. We got nothing. Now you guys are sitting here trying to fix the roof or have people outside of Wilkinson with, trying to save the roof, but what, what are you guys actually doing for our children? Nothing. Since COVID, your teachers are not helping the kids at all. And I know that for a fact because my brother, he's autistic. He's, uh, he's autistic, bipolar, he's severe depression, he's ADHD, ADD, OCD, but yet he's not in the programs that he needs to be in to graduate at all. And that is not something that I'm gonna take lightly or laying down. I want something happen to accommodate him. And you, and he's being told he's gonna get kicked out of school and stuff like that, no. You guys have no child left behind. So what happened to that? What happened to the teachers that are there to help? They're to strive to make the kids a better, better future. Your teachers in your high school are not doing that at all. And I have a witness on that because my brother is seventeen years old, not getting his help.
Okay, ma'am, you, you have your three minutes. And Mr. Abdullah had heard all of what you said, and I would expect that you will follow this up, but thank you.
He hasn't yet. I keep calling and calling and calling.
Three minutes is up. Next up, Mrs. Kennedy, please.
Is Mr. George Gale.
George Gale.
Hey, Bill. I love you, bye.
Mr. Gale. Mr. Gale.
I asked him to unmute. Mr. Gale, please unmute. His hand was up.
Alright, well, I see we have at least one more, so maybe we'll.
Mr. John Beaver.
Mr. Beaver, you have the floor, three minutes, please.
Good evening, community members, Mr. Abdullah Haddad, Board of Education. Those of you who know me know that I am generally a very positive person. I try to see the good in everything. However, tonight, I feel it's time for me to voice my concerns. We can sit and talk about the roof until we're blue in the face. Everybody knows it's failing, we know about the failing infrastructure. We know about the critical infrastructure underneath the failing roof, the electrical systems, the lighting systems, the computers, the network switches, all that kind of stuff. My biggest concern is the more valuable assets that sit underneath that roof is our students and our staff. They are the ones that are the most at risk. While we can replace electrical systems and lighting systems and a roof, we can't replace a student that falls ill and can't attend our schools anymore. Covering up the issue with new ceiling tiles or patchwork, it doesn't fix the problem. It's, it's like putting a Band-Aid on a critical wound. Approximately two years ago, I went on record to say that I will support anyone that supports our students and staff. I still stand true to that statement. Those that support our students and staff have my full support, no matter what your last name is or your life use. However, I now feel that the majority of the Board does not support our students and our staff, only in perception, whether it is in actions taken to shoot down bonds, small bonds at that. I'm trying to be as, as nice as I can about it, but I've heard it said earlier by someone else, perception is reality. Whether you want the perception of your legacy as a Board member to be what it is, the fact is what is perceived as now will become the reality. I know that I won't get an answer tonight, but I would like to know in the future, as there's many families like mine, we have five kids that attend our district, what, what incentives, what reasons would I have to keep my kids attending Madison District Public Schools? What do you guys have to offer my children that other districts do not? And the fact that I even have to consider other options is embarrassing at best. Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you. And next, Mary.
I have Nanette Bazler.
Nanette, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. I am a parent of students that attend Madison High School, as most of you know by now. I'm concerned with the conditions of the building that have continuously gotten worse over the last three years. I do not believe that the Board of Education and Superintendent are taking the situation at the high school seriously for the following reasons. One, Board President communicated in a meeting that campaign promises were more important than approving a bond for critical infrastructure. That causes people to have the perception that our children's health is not a priority and is less important than campaign promises. Two, we need a bond, not a sinking fund. A sinking fund will not cover immediate expenses. Three, there is no urgency and public follow-up regarding the bond. Four, no town hall regarding the possibility of a bond or sinking fund have been brought to the public. Five, a survey went out to some parents, employees, and community members, but not all. The survey was asked to be completed without the district communicating the needs truthfully. Six, we are going on one year since the Superintendent originally presented the bond proposal with no plan. Seven, first stage of the bond approval process passes four to three, then the excuse was used in the second vote to vote it down because again, the Superintendent didn't do his job. Again, kids suffer and dodge rain buckets and have black stuff dripping from the ceiling as they walk through the hallway. Eight, there has been no public follow-up on the mold situation. The public doesn't believe that the roof is a priority because the roof that requires a bond is not being considered by the majority or being discussed publicly. In addition to a roof at the high school, we also need a new boiler system and air conditioning. It is unbelievably hot in buildings during the warm months and perfect environment for mold growth, given the circumstances with the condition of the high school roof. The boiler does not heat the entire building in the cold months and doesn't adjust by temperature, among other issues. It is pretty sad when Setseg, the insurance company, is considering not covering any damage caused by the boiler system or the roof due to neglect of handling these issues. I'm asking for the Board of Education to seek a bond on the November ballot and fix these issues as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mary.
Do not see any other hands, no.
Oh, wait, I see Liz. Visually, I see a Liz, I don't see any, any yellow hands.
No.
Mary, it's Liz Malama.
I love you, ahead.
How you doing?
Good. I do just want to briefly state that in regards to the roof being handled, I would appreciate if that could be looked into. Me personally, I'm out of district, but I'm trying to keep my kid in with district. As my child grows, she's got type one diabetes. She can't be in heat, humidity, things like that, we're finding that out more and more now. That for more, for me to send her back to school, these are all things that I cannot send her back to, especially that. I mean, we're finding that more and more. So I really hope, in all actuality of all of you as school board members, you're looking to all the students, not just certain students because you have issues with certain parents. I'm praying to God that you look at all of it because health is issues here. You're, you're talking about someone's health, and you want me to continue sending my kid to your school and your districts to continue making more money, then I would hope you would look into all this. Thank you.
Thank you. And we want to give George Gale one more try.
I asked him to unmute. Mr. Gale, if you'd like to speak, please unmute.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Gale?
Yeah.
Yes. I, I, I'm a, I graduated from Madison. Back in the day when my class was, my graduating class was about the size of the whole student body now. And I, I think it's really terrible that the, the Superintendent, you know, I don't want to bring it up, but he makes so much money, he should pay, fix the roof out of his pocket. You know, to keep his job, that would be a good thing. Someone may, uh, he makes way too much money. And the roof needs to be fixed. I went there in seventy-seven, the seventies. Hello?
Hi, no, we're listening.
Yeah. You know, and it was a great, it was a great school. And then I, I went to Florida and I came back here, and now I'm worried about my, what is it, alma mater? You know? If that's what you want to call it. Something's gotta be done. And I believe his two fifty is way too much. Way too much. And every time I see a picture of him, he looks like he's stoned. And that's just me.
Alright, yeah, we don't want to talk disparagingly about someone.
Well, no, I'm just saying that, that, that something's gotta be done. And, and I have a lot of friends there in the, in the district, and it's going the wrong direction for a couple of years, since I've been back from Florida, it's, it's going bad. Okay, I, I'm glad you gave me some second opportunity, but, yeah, I, I have friends that send kids there and they want to take them out. There, what is your, the, the, it's two hundred and ninety-seven students? Now, I had two hundred and forty-seven in my graduating class. We had twelve hundred in the school then. You know, what happened? What happened? Hello?
This is public comment. Your three minutes are up, but we're not allowed to respond at this time, this is public.
Okay, alrighty then.
We are listening to you, but we're not supposed to say.
Just saying, what happened to my district?
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Mary, have anyone else?
Yeah, I have someone, Madison Heights Wolverines.
Okay.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, this is actually Linda Dempsey, I'm sorry about that. So just to correct that, this is Linda Dempsey, and I'm a parent of a children, our child in the district. And I just wanted to speak out really quickly and say that I wanted to thank the community members who are working really hard to be transparent and to spread important information to the public so that they're aware of the needs of the children in the district. I can imagine that it's really difficult to speak up and be, you know, feel personally attacked sometimes for doing that, but I do greatly appreciate all those efforts and the hard work. And I also would like to thank the Board members, Rebecca Chambless, Beth Scott, and Crystal Beaver for representing the children and the parents of the district and working for the best efforts of, of the parents of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mary Kennedy, do we have anyone else?
Nope, that was it. I do want to wait a minute or so, or there's no one, there's no other hands up.
No, Mr. Abdullah, how, do you see anybody that's waiting to be acknowledged? We don't want to miss anybody before we move on. No?
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, with that, we're gonna close the public comment portion of our meeting and move on to Superintendent Report. Oh, go ahead, I was just gonna say, first is the recertification of back-to-school COVID-19 plan.
Right, Madam President, the only difference we're doing in our recertification is that we removed the restriction of face masks for outdoor activities, such as any ceremonies, graduations, prom, recess, we removed those based on the June 1st guidance. Everything else is still in, in place. We figure we wouldn't change anything right now, having less than two weeks of school year left.
Alrighty. And so we don't need a motion for that, that was.
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do?
We do.
Okay. Uh, yeah, cuz I.
Okay, so this would be recommend that the Board of Education approve the recertification of the back-to-school COVID-19 plan for the month of June with the addition of removing face masks for outdoor, I guess, outdoor activities based on June 1st guidance from the state.
Ms. Holder, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we.
Alrighty.
Another second.
Miss, there. Sorry, Mr. Holcomb, sorry. I'm writing and I can't think beyond writing. May support, and with that discussion, please. Beth Scott, I see your hand, go ahead.
You're muted.
Mr. Abdullah, when, well, this is every thirty days, correct?
It's, it's the first, we, we do it the first Board meeting of the month, so it's approximately every thirty days, yes.
Okay, so can you tell me the next day that we'll be voting on this? I'm, the reason I'm asking is, I'm concerned about masks inside during summer school.
This, this will be the last one, school will be over in July, and the guidance for summer school is different. So we will present you that guidance for summer school. But this one will be the last one that you'll take action on, and then, you know.
So.
So for summer school, the guidance will be different.
Okay, but will we know that before summer school starts?
Yes, yeah, we'll communicate that to the parents and to the Board, absolutely, before the first day of summer school.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing no hands. Mary, can we call roll, please?
Hey, Crystal Beaver.
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless.
Yes.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Beth Scott.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next on the agenda, summer school presentation.
Madam President, did you do the Superintendent's report already?
Oh, you know what? I thought all of this was under that, it looked like a heading to me, like Board of Education action items. I apologize, just the way it was, I missed it. You go right ahead.
Are you sure we, we could do the summer school presentation and then I could?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, so Mary, if you could unmute and allow the presenters.
It would be Felicia.
For summer school, Ms. Hemingway, Ms. Provenzola, Ms. Troshio.
Okay. For summer school, it's just myself and Ms. Troshio.
Okay.
Then I just need to be able to screen share.
You should be able to.
Okay. Oh. You're sharing your screen, but just wait one second.
Can you do yours?
I will try.
Do you get the bottom screen share?
Yep, I I know where it's at. I was getting there right now. All right. Okay, so I'm here to just present our general plans for Madison District for our summer school program. And I am Sarah Provenzola West, Principal of Madison Elementary School. This Sam Troshio will be on. I think she is getting logged down momentarily. She'll be on. And she will be the secondary summer school coordinator during the summer. I will be coordinating at Madison Elementary School and Mr. Bobby Robinson will be coordinating at ECC, our early childhood building. So obviously, we've been through a global pandemic recently. So due to the learning loss during COVID nineteen and pandemic learning, Madison District Public Schools has planned some intensive summer school programs as well as some addition additional academic mentoring and support for our summer school. District wide will provide transportation for all in district students, those students that reside in Madison Heights, and we will provide a bus to the new Bethel bus stop that's in in Pontiac as well. So we will be transporting students to summer school. We'll provide food service throughout summer school, both both breakfast and lunch to students that are in school for summer school. And there will be certified staff members, all of our certified teachers to ensure that we're aiding in the recovery of learning loss for summer school. So for district enrollment, we have enrollment for K eight. It's open to all students in the district. So we have put out to any of the families that would like to join summer school. We've opened it up to any and all families K eight. At high school, the programs are provided for students that need it for credit recovery in order to make sure that they graduate on time. There is also special education programs that will be offered at all levels. Our projected summer school enrollment is well over two hundred students. We don't have exact numbers right now, but it is well over two hundred students for the summer. We are trying to keep class sizes small throughout all levels of summer school. Ten students or less in order to ensure that we have time to do small group instruction and individual work to really support our students and make up for some of that learning loss that's been experienced. We do request that all families are registering in advance so that we can make sure that we have appropriate staffing for all of the students that would like to attend. So we will have a program that's housed at ECC and they will house kindergarten, the early childhood special education, GSRP, and Learning Tree during summer school. Learning Tree is their childcare program. At Madison Elementary will house our first through fifth grade and our special education self-contained classes, students in first through fifth grade as well in there. And at Wilkinson Middle School and at Madison High School, they will do grades Wilkinson six through eight and the high school nine twelve and the special education students. And that'll all be housed at Wilkinson Middle School for summer school. The secondary program will be at Wilkinson. And if you have any questions, board, feel free. I'm I'm just gonna keep rolling through the presentation. So again, Mr. Bobby Robinson will be coordinating our ECC summer school program. He will be the administrator that's in throughout the summer. Kindergarten summer school is going to be aimed at those students that are transitioning up to first grade. Our GSRP is for our preschool age students. ECSE is for early childhood special education. And again, Learning Tree is before and after school care and also providing summer camps. They will provide before and after summer school care for the Madison Elementary students whose parents opt in or register for Learning Tree. We will focus on academics of the academic focus will be mathematics and literacy with literacy including science and social studies content topics to make sure that we touch on everything. Our primary focus will be focused standards on math and literacy. And then again, literacy will include those science and social studies content topics for reading and writing. And then also social emotional learning, which is something that's very important, especially with some of the turmoil and trauma that families have been through during this time. So our kindergarten program and our early childhood special education program right there on top, they're going to be running concurrently at ECC from June twenty eighth to June twenty ninth. They'll be running four days per week. Our kindergarten program will run from eight thirty to twelve thirty. We'll end with lunch and parent pickup after lunch. They're going to have three classes of kindergarten students, again with ten students or less per class. And ECC, they're running two sessions of that so that they can ensure that their classes are smaller class sizes to support those the special needs of those students in the early childhood special education. After July twenty ninth, that following week, GSRP will begin their summer school program and that will be six students or less in two different classes, running from eight thirty to twelve thirty, following the similar schedule as kindergarten did. And again, Learning Tree will be available. And at standard summer rates, there is a fee for Learning Tree because it is childcare and students attending MES will be bussed back and forth from Learning Tree, the ECC building to MES in order to attend summer school if they're signed up for Madison Elementary Summer School. Their daily schedule at kindergarten and GSRP for the the preschool program looks something like this. They're going to have breakfast in the morning, focus on some phonics, have their calendar and focus on days of the week and months. They're going to phonics is their literacy and literacy instruction, letter sounds blending, segmenting, literacy, math, and then they'll end with their lunch and parent pickup. For our in instructional programs for ELA and literacy, they have this response to intervention program that's purchased for the kindergarten and also a Tara West curriculum for English Language Arts and mathematics, again, an RTI program and Tara West math curriculum. And social emotional learning, actually, K kindergarten through fifth grade, we're going to be using the same program at the elementary school. It's a second step curriculum and it's the special part of the program called out of school time. It's specifically made for either an after school program or during summer school. And it's a program that focuses on community building, growth mindset, goal setting, emotional management, empathy, and kindness. And Madison, that's all I have for ECC's program. If anybody has any questions about early childhood.
Um, I I just have one that probably is is a little maybe even tough to answer right now, but Learning Tree is so very important and yet I know we were having a lot of problems with the the payment and things like that. I'm going to assume at this point we have some sort of process in place for that.
And I know that Mr. Robin, yes, I know that Mr. Yeah, Mr. Robinson has been very diligent about ensuring that the payment procedure has been fine tuned. He's worked very hard on that for over the last year or so, a year and a half, that he's been in that position to be over Learning Tree. Maybe it's two years now. And he's been working very diligently to make sure that all of the the billing procedures are in place appropriately and that they're making sure that they're contacting appropriate people. So I have every faith that he's going to be able to take care of that. Yes.
Great, thank you.
Good job. Okay. So Madison Elementary. We are going to have our summer school program for both our our first through fifth grade in general education classes and our special education self-contained. They're going to mirror the same schedule. The week prior to our summer school program with students starting, we're going to have some planning and professional development for the teachers. A summer school orientation day. And then and that's the very first week after we get out of school, our school year ends June eighteenth. And the following Tuesday, we're going to have some PD on the the summer school program that the board approved, I believe, the last meeting, achieve three thousand. And they'll have some PD to make sure that that's implemented. And we'll have a summer summer school orientation day to give the parents information about our whole summer school program. Twenty eighth through the twenty ninth will be our intensive summer school program where the students will be in from nine AM till one thirty each day. Four and a half hours a day, four days a week. There will be teacher planning time at the end of each day to ensure that they're prepared to instruct the students the following day. And there'll be no school on July fifth and observance of Fourth of July. Following our intensive summer school program, the next two weeks, weeks seven through eight are going to be a summer school mentoring and summer drop in reading program. From nine to twelve, two days a week for three hours, we will have our media center open and students will be able to drop in. There will be certified teachers in the media center who will help students pick out books at their reading level to make sure that they are right at the students' levels so they can effectively read and take those books home, read with their parents, come back the next day or another day, one of the other days that the drop in reading program is open, exchange the book if they like or or look for another one that is right at their level and in their interest area. And they'll be able to just keep up on that reading throughout the summer because it's very important to to combat that learning loss. So at Madison Elementary, our summer school, we're going to have two sections for each grade level. No more than ten students per class, again, to allow for small group and individual attention. Special education students who receive learning resource who aren't in a self-contained class, we will have a qualified certified special education teacher who will provide a learning resource for those students based on their goals. And our self-contained special education students will follow the same time and attendance summer school schedule as all of our other students and they will have their current self-contained teacher there during the summer. And those who receive OTPT, I didn't put this on the slide, but those who receive those special services that will be arranged for during summer school as well. Let me just click here. Okay, there we go. Again, our focus academic focus will be math and literacy with our literacy, including science and social studies content. And that second step for social emotional learning, we'll use our second step curriculum. We will have time built in the day for breakfast, for lunch, math and ELA and social emotional learning. And there's a stagger between social emotional learning and two different recesses because we have two sections of each grade level to ensure that not all of the students are using the same areas at once. So and then parent pickup by one thirty. And our self-contained students will follow similar schedules, but they will have time for their individual IEP goals to be worked into their school day. There will be a para in the class to support them. Again, we um applied for, we included in our summer school application achieve three thousand. The board approved that as ordering achieve three thousand. They have an intensive summer literacy program that's part of that online tutorial program that works with their literacy program. There is a pre-assessment built in for the students to see right where they're at and then it it knows that they're on a summer school schedule, so it provides them intensive summer school literacy instruction. And there's also a smart answers for the younger kids. That's for the first and second graders and the literacy achieve three thousand is for third through fifth grade. There's also that achieve mathematics that came with the program. We also have a Math for Love summer school program that's a problem solving game based program program. And we'll be using hands-on manipulatives to support that in math. And then again, our second step summer school program with the same units that ECC will be using. Then our drop in summer school mentoring and reading program. And there's going to be certified teachers there Tuesday and Thursday. It's three hours for those two days a week. And there will also be a book reading during that time. We have received grant funds from open schools this year. And we have used that to expand our library of inclusive books that represent all different types of people. And there will be book readings during our drop in summer reading program. And I believe that that is it for the elementary program. If anybody has any questions about elementary. Okay. Did Ms. Troshio make it on?
Yeah, I'm here. I can't. My my video is disabled. I can't. That was a whole setting, so.
If you talk, I'll just flip through the screens.
Okay, so the Wilkinson, it will be in two parts as well. So we have, we'll be planning before we get out of the school year. And so we'd be meeting after school. We have been meeting and will continue to meet up until the end of the school year. So we have our summer school intensive program. So it'll be, there's four certified staff members that will be running it nine to one. And then we will have the teacher planning time for reflection and kind of any tweaking of the activities or or progression, things like that. And then August second through thirteenth, same as the elementary, we have the two days a week. And we're going to do a project based learning. And so we will have, and it's a star or steam because it includes art and design. But the students will be making robots and designing different sculptures that they can make using Legos and connects and things like that, kind of tying that math and science into it. So that'll be two days a week. So the next slide, please. So this is kind of the daily schedule for the intensive one. So you see, as you can see, we've broken it up into basically hour by hour. So when we say reading, we're talking about helping the kids find books at their grade level, getting them really engaged and and something that they want to keep reading a book that they'll finish. Literacy, so we're talking about writing and also research. We have some project based plans for students to research and create presentations on things they find interesting, teaching them computer literacy and and how to do research and really utilize a lot of those tools that we've been using via Google over the last year. Then we have the social emotional component as well. So we have some yoga, some art. We have different activities planned. We also have, you can see every other day, sports. We have Mr. Jarboe, who's amazing and great at coming up with different team building exercises. And then we have our math. So that's going to be practice for students, really working on those foundational skills, which we find a lot of middle schoolers that struggle with math is because the foundational skills need more practice. So we have kind of a holistic approach to teach the whole child. That that's our plan. So that kids are engaged and we have the learning loss, but also cover the socio-emotional. Because I think a lot of kids have suffered that over the past year. And so we've had based on parent and student interest, that's what we've been hearing from the community. So we we formulated our our program to reflect that. So. So the academics, mathematics and literacy, so science, art, and math will be mixed in with the different literacy projects. But what we'll be tracking, so we have, we'll have an assessment in the beginning assessment at the end is really where they're at with their math and literacy. And we have, I I'm an English teacher, but the math teacher too has come up with different like six, seventh, and eighth assessments that we can start from beginning to end to really track their growth. And teachers will be tracking their growth weekly in those half hour after school times. And then the socio-emotional learning, so we have different confidence and communication building activities, art, physical activity. So really looking at the whole child and how we can holistically help boost them from, you know, some of the deficits that we experienced over the past year. So Madison High School, so the there we go. Yes, so it is, it'll be an intensive program and it's course recovery based. It will be housed at Wilkinson as well. And we have two, it's all certified staff, but we have two teachers from the high school. And then we have a paraprofessional that's going to be helping as well. So we, again, we're planning before we get out of the school year so that when the the program starts, we have everything lined up. I actually just spent two and a half hours today calling parents and making sure that we have everything set up and and making sure that the courses that the high schoolers are assigned are you know, what they need and will really help them graduate on time and things like that. So as you can see, it's still four hours teacher planning time. It's pretty much the same. And so, yeah, we plan out the time so they can do two ad mentum courses. It really depends on the child and what they need. But they could finish two different courses over the course of the time that we have. You see, there's You see, there's thirty minutes built in there for social emotional, so we're talking about team-building exercises, getting outside, not being in front of a screen for the whole four hours. And we find that kids get a lot more productive that way, and you have less staring off and less disengagement when they can get some energy out in the middle. So the academics, it's credit recovery, really, but there's the social emotional through team building, so as you can see, the academics are the majority of the time, but our teachers are committed to, to helping the high schoolers with that socio-emotional as well. So we do have special education services, we're super, super fortunate to have the high school special education teacher and our paraprofessional come, and they're coming over and they're going to work one-on-one with our students that are participating. And the curriculum is completely tailored to their needs and their yearly academic goals, and they will be, you know, included to in the, so like the middle school, say we're going to the park, or we're doing, so we're building some kind of activity, and the teachers are like, yeah, our students would be interested in that, we do have integration opportunities so that they're meeting their goals, but they can also, you know, people can socialize with each other and they're not completely isolated. So, yeah, are there any questions for the middle or high school components?
I can't see only half of them.
Okay. So if anybody does have any questions, feel free to contact me, I'll be coordinating the elementary school. Mr. Robinson will be coordinating ECC and Ms. Trosio will be coordinating secondary.
Thank you for all your hard work in getting this together, and we know it will be a successful summer.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, it is, it is our pleasure.
So what, what they've not shared with you is that they have spent the last, the better half of the last three months working with a team of approximately twenty teachers across grade level to ensure that what they're presenting to you has, has merit, that it supports learning loss, and I applaud, applaud the entire team, teaching staff, Ms. Provinzola, Ms. Trosio, Mr. Robinson. In the last, I've been here since 2013, I've never witnessed, and I've done summer school every year that I've been here, whether as a teacher or principal, I have never witnessed an extensive summer school program as the one that you were just presented with. And I've never seen over two hundred students enroll into different summer schools. And again, I can't speak for beyond 2013, but since I've been here, this is the most extensive. And they're, they're trying to infuse the learning loss, but that crucial social emotional aspect as well. So if you don't have any further questions on that, Madam President, if we could proceed with Ms. Hemingway's presentation, and then, then I could do the superintendent's report, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. So we will move on to C. No, yes, C.
Ben.
Go ahead.
Would force us to construct a new structure? Do we have to construct it to the existing structure?
Hi, Mary.
Ms. Hemingway, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Mary, just make sure Mrs. Hemingway is allowed to share her screen.
Are we skipping the preschool presentation?
No, that's coming, that's coming too. I'm sorry, was that supposed to be, if the board doesn't mind, since we already have Ms. Hemingway's presentation, and then we'll do the preschool one next.
So there's no vote needed on the summer school presentation, correct?
No.
Yes. We wanted to pay the teachers thirty-five dollars an hour, it'd be wonderful if the board would approve that thirty-five dollar an hour rate for the teachers for the summer program.
Um.
Before we move on then, do we have someone, I don't have the motions for this in front of me, unfortunately, so.
Yeah.
The motion to, yes, go ahead, Mary.
I think I'm the one that said chair, unless I didn't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought it was Mary, I apologize, but I had Rebecca.
I was just wondering if I can make a motion to pay the teachers thirty-five dollars an hour for summer school.
And.
That's what's being requested, right?
And do we have support?
Chair, I have just one quick question. I had thought I seen somewhere that the admins were going to have a different pay, do we need to approve that at the same time with that motion, or?
We need to have a second on this so we can have discussion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Holcomb is supporting. Now we open discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Beaver.
I had just, was a question for Dr. Hill, should we include in that motion the pay for the admins as well? Since it's not in front of us, I didn't know if we should do a separate motion after this one, or just amend the motion and add to it? I had thought I had read somewhere that it was a different pay for the admins, I just want to make sure we're including them.
Yes, I definitely wanted to include them, and normally it would be in their CBA, but if it is not, then I definitely want to include them at this time.
At the same rate, at the thirty-five?
No, the admins, they make, make a little more than the thirty-five.
Okay, is it possible, um, obviously, we want to have a number as we.
The admins, it's fifty dollars an hour. And the teachers is thirty-five an hour.
So can I amend my motion to pay, that I'd like to make a motion to pay the teaching staff thirty-five dollars an hour and the admins fifty dollars an hour for summer school?
Yes, thank you.
As long as support agrees, we can change that motion.
How's the board?
Madam President?
Yes.
This is Gloria Thompson.
Hi Gloria, can't see you.
Is, am I missing something here? The first I'm hearing about the thirty-five dollars an hour and the fifty dollars an hour, what is the total cost going to be on this? Do we have that in front of us?
Currently, our current cost, because the cost changes as students enroll, and those numbers are changing, but currently we're looking at two hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, plus the cost of supplies, plus the cost of transportation, and we'll know those final costs when we have a final cost of the number of students participating. This cost could go down or it can go up. And you're looking at, you know, for example, for the elementary school, Sarah, she mentioned that she wanted ten kids per, per course, and she's estimating two hundred kids, so that's twenty teachers at thirty-five dollars an hour plus benefits. That's how I came up with that, and then I added, you know, middle school, you're looking at roughly about forty-one thousand, and the same with the high school credit recovery program. But like I said, this amount, it'll change if we don't get the registration from the students, of course, we won't need as many teachers. So we're still compiling registration. You know, we're still registering kids at this point, we don't have a final number. But that's what I'm estimating right now, plus the cost of supplies, transportation. And then, of course, this is going to be paid for using twenty-three B funding, which is grant funding. And so far, we only received the innovation portion of the funding, which is about forty-six thousand, eight hundred, thirty-two, two dollars. And then as we, I believe MDE is waiting on the school district counts because they have not given us our totals yet, our funding yet for twenty-three B. I believe they are waiting on our student counts first, and we have to turn in student counts on June the fifteenth. So that's where we stand with that, and I can definitely update you as our numbers are final, our student numbers. Because our student numbers are going to drive the number of teachers that we actually need.
So Edwin, let me ask you, this grant funding will cover all of this?
Definitely. You know, we have a, you know, twenty-three B funding, it's based on the student count. Okay, you get like five hundred and fifty dollars per student. So that's what drives everything. So, you know, it's, it's going to be a wonderful summer program, I'm hoping that, you know, our families enroll their kids because that's going to drive our funding. And if we get the kids, you know, participating, we'll have enough money.
Okay.
I, I would say.
Thank you.
I, I would say, giving the learning loss, that it's worth every penny, it's worth every penny because the last eighteen, nineteen months being off and on, and the level of engagement for those students was not at a hundred percent. And then we also applied for credit recovery grant funding, and then the innovation funding, we got the first portion, but we are allowed to amend the agenda and reapply for further innovation, given that Wilkinson now has provided an innovative program.
Yeah, I never disagreed with the need, but just wondered where the money was coming from, okay?
Madam President?
Yes, that's, go ahead, Mrs. Beaver.
Okay, so I am all for the summer school, I am all for the teachers getting the paid, I'm all for the admins. It's a wonderful thing, I don't care if it was funding or not, I'm happy to agree to pay it. What I do not appreciate is, I asked this question from the superintendent, he probably wasn't aware that we really needed to take a vote, but I don't like to be surprised with these things at the last minute, that now we have to be, that this is something that we should be voted on, that we're voting on. I'm happy to vote on it, but I, for, I'm going to keep saying this for future references, I wish that we would not be surprised by stuff like this. So we're well aware of it, and can ask any questions prior to and be informed. This board should never be surprised on something like this, we should know this well ahead of time, thank you, so.
Okay, thank you, and Ms. Beaver, go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate what Ms. Thompson and Ms. Scott had said, that I'm willing to, regardless, even if we don't get all of the funding and it ends up costing us some to get the students where they need to be. But I did have a question for Dr. Hill. Is this the funding where the five fifty only goes to our in-district students, or was that a different twenty-three B or twenty-three C? I know we had a little.
Yeah, they had a.
Confusion with that, so I didn't know if this was the funding that's only comes in for in-district students.
No, you know, no, it is for all of our registered students, you know, registered to the district. You know, um, you know, those students, they qualify, you know, if they're, you know, our registered students.
Okay.
You know, of course, if you have students that are coming in, you know, and they're from other districts, of course, you know, we don't get any money for them.
Sure.
I thought, that's what you, okay, wait, let me clarify that. I thought that was your question, Chris.
My question was, I had sat through a MASB thing actually on the summer school, and there was some confusion, and me and Mr. Dula, I kind of went back and forth, and I believe I'm going to end up owing him an apology after all this, but we'll see. They had said that it was either twenty-three B or twenty-three C, if Rebecca or Beth can correct me, on the summer school funding, that the five fifty would only go for students that live in our district. But even if they're registered, but they live out of district, that we wouldn't get that five fifty funding for, so I was just asking for clarification, if we had applied for the grant where we would get it regardless if they were in district or out of district?
Yeah, yeah, because I applied for the twenty-three B. Yeah, and what some districts do, you know, they allow students from other districts to, like, maybe participate in their credit recovery, you know, or things of that nature. You, you wouldn't get reimbursed for that, but I only applied for the twenty-three B funding, which means that, you know, our students that, you know, that we generate funding for, you know, will also be supported by this funding source, the twenty-three B.
I just want to.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I want to say this, once they enroll in Madison District, there are students. So whether they're out of district or in district, there are students, so whether you get the funding, you can't really exclude students, it has to be open to all.
I agree, and I wasn't saying that we should include or exclude anybody, I was just curious on the funding portion. Because like I said, even if it end up costing us, I would be fine with that, I was just curious.
Dr. Hill, I have a question.
Yes.
Rebecca, go ahead, you have the floor.
Um, I have a question, so if there are students, so when we sat in the seminar, they said that it was possible, like, the student would have had to have attended our district the previous semester. So if we had a student who, let's just say, went to Lampier last semester, and they want to come to our summer school, would we allow them to come into the credit recovery or any step along the way, and if we did, I'm assuming if we did allow them, they would not qualify for grant money, we would just cover the cost of it, like, would we allow outside students to come in for summer school?
You know what, that is a programming question, it's, it has financial ramifications. But usually, when you set up a summer program, you decide whether you're going to allow students that are not currently attending the district to attend, you know, because, you know, what they're talking about, you know, when you take your pupil count in the spring, you know, that's what, what they're talking about when they say, you know, did the student, you know, attend, you know, the semester before. So that is a programming question.
I'll answer the programming question, Dr. Hill, and you answer the finance questions. So, Ms. Chamberlain, if there are resident, but attend another district, and say they move back, back to this district and try to enroll for the fall, we'll take them, but they cannot just enroll just for the summer, because the program is developed based on the students that we have currently.
Okay.
Unless someone moves in, say someone just moved into our district, then yes, they qualify for that because they moved into the district.
Yes, and I wanted to reiterate from a financial standpoint, the money is based on your pupil count. You know, your pupil, you know, your pupil count, period, you know, that's how we, that's how each school district goes about getting this funding, it's based on our pupil count, you know, from the spring count. So.
Dr. Hill, I had one question for clarification. You said, um, we had salaries, transportation, supplies and benefits.
Yes.
I guess, my husband taught summer school and it was always a flat rate, so what benefits are we talking about?
Um, when you're paid a salary, you know, we also have to pay benefit costs at about point forty-seven percent. So the quickest way to come up with that figure, and what I mean is, you know, whenever, whenever, you know, you we got to pay for healthcare, dental, life and vision, you know, those kind of benefits.
That we, this would be over and above what we might be normally paying? I'm confused.
You know what, it's not over and above, it's, it's part of the cost, you know, like, um.
So they're getting their health benefits for the year, and, and they're getting a flat fee.
You know.
Their salary. I just wanted.
Yeah, you know what?
It made me a little confused.
Yep, you know, from a financial standpoint, you know, some benefits are covered during the year, and then there are some additional benefits that we have to pay, you know, like ORS costs and things of that nature that are separate and different, you know, like, for example, your, your benefits, you know, are paid, you know, during the year, but then, you know, you have additional retirement benefits that have to be paid on each dollar that you make. And summer school is in addition to what they normally make, so we have to pay out some additional benefit costs. Okay, so that's kind of how that works.
All right, thank you for the clarification. I have a request from Mary, can we? Uh, I I have a request from Mary. Can we get back maybe to the screen so everyone? I'm struggling to, I only see four of us here. Wonderful. Now I can see if someone wants my attention. Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Scott, go ahead.
Dr. Hill, is there a way that you can send us something on the board, something on this, what we're talking about right now? Since we don't have anything in front of us.
You know what? I can send you a cost breakdown. That is no problem. I I have it and I can send it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And and basically what we're looking at, you know, I'm just wanna cover us. You know, you got the wonderful summer school presentation, but I like to be covered, you know, and uh, the board approving us to pay the teachers thirty-five dollars an hour for their work. And and the administrators fifty dollars an hour and you'll have it tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. Are we ready? Roll call vote, please, Mrs. Kennedy.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chamberlain? Yes. Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can I interrupt? There's um, I'm the only one that's hearing this.
No.
No.
So Mary, can you mute everyone except for the school, you know, the board event?
From what I understand, the only people that are unmuted are this board of ed, according to my computer.
Okay, well, the background noise is gone, so whatever it was, it's gone.
And.
And Madam President.
Had, it's after eight.
It's eight fifteen. Would you um, like the capturing kids' hearts, Madam President, or would you like a break? It's uh, it's been about an hour and fifteen minutes.
My understanding is that we have someone that requires a break. Um, is five minutes enough?
Nope.
Okay, we have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Then we'll go back. Mr. Abdullah had, uh, did we wanna do the preschool or did you wanna get your superintendent report? And then we can keep moving right along.
Well, we we have the preschool, however you want me to do it, you have your preschool, you have capturing kids' heart, and then the superintendent. However you want me to proceed, uh, we're okay with.
Um, okay, let's do the two presentations and then we'll have you take, take the floor.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Five minute break.
Mary, don't forget to pause the.
Miss Holder, do we have to take a vote if we go on break?
We were told no. It was clarified we did not. So that's the protocol that I'm following.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. I'm gonna ask you.
We do have to take a break, or we do have to take a vote for the summer school, uh, summer school, correct?
Right, that's next up. Yep. No.
No, that's the preschool program.
Summer school, we did. Summer school, we just did.
But we didn't actually vote on it. I don't think we actually took a vote. I thought we had to vote on the thirty-five. Oh, we did. I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes.
Yeah.
We did, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Madam.
No problem. Yes, go ahead.
Do you want preschool um, or preschool? Okay, Mr. Robinson, uh, Mary, if you could unmute Mr. Robinson and his team.
Yes.
Allow Mr. Robinson to um, share his screen. Mr. Robinson, are you here?
I am here. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Um, Emily Byrne and Emily Tockins are also, um, I think she unmuted. I just saw.
I did.
I just saw one of the Emilys. So we have two. So uh, I just saw one.
They should both be unmuted.
Yep, there they are. Uh, all right, so I'm gonna share my screen here and get this set up for you guys. Oh, bum 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 bum. All right, you guys can see that?
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so obviously, my name is Bobby Robinson. I am the administrator at the ECC building. Uh, I am joined by Emily Byrne, who is the middle picture on here. She is our early on coordinator. Um, and then Emily Tockins is our speech pathologist. Um, and we're, obviously, we're here to present to you a uh, tuition-based preschool program. And you know, it's it, what we're trying to do is just kind of bring kids into our district that we are, um, that we're kind of losing. And we'll talk about why, why that's happening and hopefully we can, um, we can change that. Okay, so our goal is to have a solid reputation in the community, which, I mean, if you listen to our public comments, I'm not sure that everyone agrees that we, um, we have that reputation, but um, if we don't, at least we're trying to bring that back to the Early Childhood Center. I'd like to think that we have a warm and comforting environment there. I, you know, our staff is very uh, very family oriented when it comes to bringing in our, um, bringing in our kiddos. Uh, we have a passionate, our passionate staff that includes our teachers, our para pros. Whether it's, you know, our early on coordinators, our speech, or um, you know, special ed, how, how, whoever it is. I I I feel that everyone there is very passionate in what we do. Um, active learning, child-friendly facilities. Um, if you've ever been to Hapman, the old Hapman, that's kind of changed and we've kind of turned that into uh, what we now call our Early Childhood Center. Uh, we uh, we're trying to create and keep enrollment. As you know, I mean, most of you know, our our enrollment is kind of up and down depending on what year it is. Um, and a lot of people, a lot of people believe that we're losing kids faster than we're bringing them in. So our job, our job at the early, at the Early Childhood Center is to make sure that we get every child we can from the age three to five and keep them here and then send them off to M E S. That is our goal. Um, we wanna use this as a feeder program, just as I just spoke about. And then we are trying to fill the gap year from early on to GSRP. Um, and if you don't know what early on is, I'm gonna let Emily Byrne explain a little bit about early on, because most people don't know what early on is.
It's a really uh, well-hidden secret.
Yeah, thank you.
So early on is a federally funded program. Every district in the county has it. Every um, school district in the country actually has it. Uh, may not be called early on though. So in Michigan, it's called early on and it's basically special education for um, infants and toddlers. So from birth until age three, let's say your toddler's not rolling over when they should be. Um, that might be a little red flag to you. You would get a referral for early on. Um, and our team would would help you uh, figure out that problem. So I see my students up until they turn three years old. And usually that's around the time when parents are thinking about sending their children to preschool. I would love to just be able to say, hey, we have a great three-year-old preschool program. You guys should check it out, enroll. Unfortunately, um, we currently don't have one, so I'm often um, left to just um, send them elsewhere. And I've often found that they typically don't come back after they've established roots in other districts or other programs.
All right, so um, what we have here is our, kind of our roadmap on how we're trying to get this preschool up and running. Obviously, we've been planning to, um, you know, planning the different parts of what a preschool needs to have and how we're going to furnish it and how we're gonna get kids and how we're gonna teach it and what kind of curriculum we're gonna use. So that started a few months ago with conversations with me and the both, uh, with both Emilys. Um, obviously tonight, we're at step number two. We're presenting to the board. Our next step, obviously, is if it gets approved, we are trying to fill that classroom. And I kind of, it happened today. I was just outside getting our our kids on the bus and I ran into a parent who had a couple little ones and I just asked her how old they were. And she said, well, this one's four and they're going to GSRP. And I said, well, what about this little one? She said, well, she's three. I said, well, you're in luck, cause after tonight, we're gonna have a preschool program. And she'll be able to, you know, follow her siblings right through the Early Childhood Center and on to M E S. Um, and she was real excited about that. So that's, you know, it, but it's gonna take more than just myself to recruit kids out walking the sidewalk or picking up a sibling. Prepping the building in a preschool classroom, we have room at the Early Childhood. Uh, we have multiple classrooms that we kind of, you know, use for storage or um, others, you know, other things in our building. Um, we currently have a room ready to go for our, uh, for our preschool. Um, and we're using the same furniture that we've used for other parts of the building uh, in the past. Next, we also have to get approval by the state, cause every room that we use in that building has to be approved by the state through licensing. Uh, I contacted a lady, uh, her name is Jennifer Litz. She comes out, she tells me, um, she asked me what rooms we're using. I I let her know that we are using this room for preschool. She runs through, you know, kind of the licensing process and lets me know that, okay, we're good to go. Which take, which takes some time because um, she's busy and just takes her a little bit of time to get out. Um, and then after we, you know, we get there and we're, we're good to go, we start enrolling families, which um, which hopefully happens sooner than later. Uh, number seven is starting the school year with a full classroom. And a full classroom is ten students. So that's our goal, that's our goal before August thirtieth, is to have uh, ten students. Because with the preschool, because it comes a ratio, you can only have a certain amount of kids uh, per adult. It's not like a high school where you can put thirty-five kids in an English class and have one, you know, have one teacher in there. Just like our GSRP, you can only have one per eight, or I'm sorry, it's one per twelve. So we have over that number, so we need two adults in our GSRP room. So that's where we're at now and my, I am blocked from number eight. I can't see it. Let me see here. Oh, there isn't a number eight. Thank you. Okay, cause I was blocked by uh, all the faces. Okay, all right. Next, uh, first and foremost, this is not childcare. This is not what we had two years ago. This, this program will be, will follow the GSRP curriculum, which is um, called Highscope, which is M D E approved. Our teachers will create lesson plans. Our teachers will be trained. Um, and you'll, you'll see later on, you know, the the days that the kids will be in our preschool, there's a day where our teachers will use that day for training and and to go to professional development and meet with other teachers to collaborate and to build lesson plans and to build assessments. Um, our students will be monitored, monitored and assessed. They will follow the early childhood hours. Um, it won't be a six in the morning until six at night like the old childcare was. We will follow the district calendar. We will serve breakfast, lunch, and our ratio is one to ten. All right. At any point in time, if Emily Byrne or Tockins, you guys wanna jump in, please do so. Shoot, wrong one. Okay, why preschool? It allows our, an opportunity for kids to grow. We see it every year when kids who don't attend preschool or GSR pre, uh, GSRP program, when they get to kindergarten, a lot of them aren't ready to be going, to go to school five days a week. Uh, seven hours a day. They're not ready to write. They're not ready to, they have a hard time interacting with other kids. Um, so going from three to four and then getting into kindergarten, it allows that growth to take place. Um, and it, it prepares students to go from our preschool to our GSRP to our kindergarten as well. Um, it promotes social and emotional development. The environment is structured. It is not, hey, here are a bunch of toys. Let's go play for seven hours. We come in, there's a routine. Every morning you come in, for example, in our GSRP program, every day the kids come in, they go move their name from either, um, um, pre, so once they see that their name is moved, it tells the teachers that they are present and in school. They start to um, they learn how to hold a pencil, which may seem minute, but there are a ton of kids who come to school who don't know how to hold a pencil. So they kind of, they kind of start to develop early and quickly. Uh, children get to make choices. Uh, children learn how to take care of themselves and others. Promotes language development and cognitive skills. Teachers nurture a child's curiosity. Activities boost pre-math and literacy skills and it helps develop motor skills.
Can I jump in and say something, Bobby?
Absolutely, go ahead.
I think, um, you know, with the pandemic from this past year, I know I've been having a lot of referrals of what I've been calling COVID babies. Um, whether it's a child who's been born during the COVID pandemic or it's a child that, really, that's all they know. Um, and they've been cooped up in their houses, rightfully so, to be safe. Um, but then that leads to less socialization. So this program would also help to jumpstart um, again, that social development that is so important to children learning. And um, in addition to all the academics um, that Bobby was talking about.
I wanna add one thing as well, Bobby, just real quick. Um, I just had a couple of parents, all early on, um, parents that have kiddos aging out, which means like turning three, um, who are seeking um, something more than just, you know, walk-in services, cause I can provide my services once a week, but they basically come in. I work with them and I know a lot of them are looking for more than that, um, not just like a daycare program, but they're wanting something with curriculum that kind of has this classroom-based component to it as well. So just trying to advocate for my component as a speech-language pathologist that um, this is super important. I think this is something that the students need, especially for, you know, the socialization component, language development, cognition, all of it. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you, guys. So what we need, um, outside of, outside of the students, which I put last, which really is the first thing we need, uh, we need one lead teacher. Smart boards. So the the money, only the money that, the only money that we will spend will be on on smart boards and hopefully some iPads. Uh, what we have, we have the space, we have the classroom, we have the furniture. Um, I mean, I don't know exactly what else is gonna take place, but for the most, I mean, we have the curriculum. It's already in the building. Most of what we need is already there. We just need to fill it with, with children and and a teacher who's gonna love them. So these, you know, every side, so this picture is on my computer at school and every time I go through pictures to put in newsletters or PowerPoints, um, I kind of come across this picture and I use it all the time because I just love the way that these guys, you know, just look at whoever's looking at them. Um, these are five of our kids from this year. Um, and I can tell you, they love it at their Early Childhood Center. They really do. They're always smiling. They're always happy. And that's because of our staff, you know, and, you know, whether it's a para or people in the office or their teacher or whether they go to speech, whatever it is. This is what you see every time you walk into um, our building. So because we had issues in the past with the childcare, I know this is kind of a, a big deal. So what out, what we will do.
Uh, Bobby.
And this is a four days a week program uh, for kids, five days a week for the staff. We're gonna charge two hundred dollars a week, which if you compare that to any other preschool in the surrounding area, it's probably cheaper than every, Lampier charges three hundred and fifty a week. So think about that for a second. But if you read the last two lines, that's what it's gonna, that's what it's gonna provide.
Uh, Bobby, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, the 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 most crucial part of this is that Emily is already seeing those early on kids. Emily, how many um, early on kids you have already that you're seeing weekly or on a monthly basis?
I see my students at least once a week. Um, and right now we have, I think it's ten and then I'm onboarding one at the moment, so we'll have about eleven.
So if she has ten students and right now they they entrust her because she's been working with them all year, how easy would that be for Emily to say, let me introduce you to Mr. Robinson, let me give you a tour of our preschool and they're already used to, Emily, they're used to our district. It's a real easy transition. And most um, kids have siblings and our hope is to capture some of those siblings that might be in in um, first or kindergarten or second grade. We know that we're not losing students transitioning from ECC to M E S. We, once we have them, we have them and the the loss tends to occur between middle elementary, fifty-six, and then again from eight to nine. So we know that we could get them. and then again from eight to nine. So we know that we could get them. And so i- it becomes a, a nice feeder program for us. Sorry, Bobby.
That's okay. Well, it's funny that you talk about that because about three weeks ago, Emily Tonkins has a walk-in speech kiddo and mom literally lives a block and a half down the street. But he currently attends our three, the three-year-old program in Ferndale. And Emily's like, well, you know, we have a GSRP and mom keeps telling him, keeps telling her, hey, we're comfortable in Ferndale, we're good, we're happy. I said, Emily, next time they come in, let mom know I want to talk to her. Mom registered the next day. And I don't know how much it had to do with me as much to what I was telling her about, you know, we have a GSRP program. We have our kindergarten, it's all in this building. We have transportation for you. This is a mom who got in her car in a wheelchair and drove to Ferndale every day because we didn't have a three-year-old program. So you can read the screen. It is a competition to see who can bring the most students and it is a competition. It's, we're recruiting, everyone's recruiting to see how many kids we can bring into our district. All of our surrounding districts, Royal Oak, Warren, Ferndale, Hazel Park, all have three-year-old programs and we do not. So every kid who their parent is thinking about sending them to three-year-old, to a three-year-old preschool has to go elsewhere. And add something else that Mr. Abdullah had was just saying, I went around to our GSRP today and I talked to them and I said, tell me how many siblings you have that are turn, that are three years old. Then I went to Emily Tonkin and I asked her about her kids and then I asked Emily, Emily Byrne. We have ten kids right now, including the one I recruited out, out front of the school today that are ready to go into that room. Ten kids already. We'll fill that room by August and be ready to go.
Bobby, sorry to interrupt. Mary, can you unmute the trustees? They have some questions and they're not able to unmute themselves. Sorry, Bobby.
Okay, obviously just another, another slide with the little, you know, just a picture and little, you know, something there that you guys can read. And then obviously, you know, that's the end of our presentation. I'll take any questions that you guys may have. Emily's here also, if, well, sorry, both Emilys are here if you have questions for them as well because they know, believe it or not, two years ago, early on meant absolutely nothing to me as an upper elementary slash middle school guy. Like she said, it's the best kept secret. Not many people know what it's all about. So they are way smarter than I am when it comes to what early on really is.
Mr. Robinson, this is Baskad, I have a question for you.
Absolutely.
So you showed us the slide of the cost. What about the people that can't afford that? Is there tuition?
So, so usually parents who do not, who can't afford a preschool or even like Learning Tree, they qualify, some of these parents qualify for DHS, which we will accept.
Okay. And we have someone that's going to handle that because I know previously we did not have anyone. So are you the one responsible for the DHS paperwork and you'll be doing that or?
Scott, Ms. Scott, I can only do nice PowerPoints. I can't do everything at the building. No, we have, so Michelle Scott, who is our administrative assistant at the building, she has all that information for parents.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that that was, and congratulations, Bobby, to you and your team. It is a great thing. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Hi, it's Debbie I.
Hi Debbie, how are you?
I'm great. How about you?
I'm good, thank you.
I think this is a wonderful addition and I think it's going to do well. Do we have more rooms if this really takes off?
Well, um. Both of, both of, me and both Emilys talk on a regular basis and I actually, we were just talking about that today about how much room we have in that building if this thing does explode. Because what's going to happen, when we fill this, this preschool room, it's going to, we, we're already filling three GSRP rooms without a preschool.
Awesome.
So what this will do, it will just, I mean, I think in a year or two, we'll have two preschool rooms and four GSRP rooms. That's just, I mean, that's just my goal. And I think with the help of these two ladies, that will happen.
Mr. Holcomb, you have your hand up?
Yes, how about the teachers and our, I should say our employees? Will they get cut rates or anything if they have children or teachers?
Yeah, so we have not done that in the past. For example, well, let me say this, we have not done that as long as I've been there.
Nor are we going to do that. So let's just put that, no, we, we are not, we are not doing that.
Okay.
That's how, that's how you get yourself into a debt.
Thank you. I didn't want to say that, but that's exactly what happens.
That's what happens.
Okay, Ms. Chambliss, I see your hand up, go ahead.
I was just wondering, if a family has multiple students, would they get like a discount for having multiple children attend?
So if they bring twins?
Yeah.
You know what, we, we haven't really thought about it. What we do for our G, for our Learning Tree program is we do give like a twenty percent off there. We have not thought, but I haven't thought about that. I'm just hoping to get ten kids in there, which I think we will have. If that, let me tell you, if, if it does come across the table or come to me with that problem, then I will obviously have to speak with Mr. Abdullah and we'll go from there.
We, what we're trying to do, Ms. Chambliss, is we're trying to establish longevity. Because if, if it's not self-funded, then you get yourself in a bind. So having twenty kids and two teachers or having fifteen kids and still two teachers, it's a huge difference, right? Because you still have to pay the two teachers. So ideally, what we want is to have each class be at capacity. So then, you know, the, the self-funding occurs.
Okay, I was just asking because I know that a lot of families, if, you know, they don't qualify for DHS because the stipulations to get DHS don't necessarily always represent if a family can afford things like this.
Right.
So for the families that have multiple kids and don't, you know, qualify for DHS, this might, like if they got a small discount, at least it might help them come over.
We, we are nearly half, half the price of neighboring districts, half the price. That's not, that's not bad when someone goes up three blocks north of us and has to pay $350 a week.
Yeah, only, and I only know what Lanfear costs because, you know, that's where my kids go, that's where I live. And so I, I had to pay that because we wanted our kids to, to start early. Not because we, we were working, my wife was home, but there's something to be, you can, you can tell kids in kindergarten who've been to school before kindergarten. You can tell those kids, I mean, you can tell the way they hold a pencil, the way they line up, the way they speak to other kids, the way they speak to you. The way they walk down the hall. There, there's a difference in the kids who are, are in preschool and GSRP and the kids who just show up for the first day of kindergarten.
And Mary, could I, could you change the screen so I could see everybody again?
I'm all done, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, they spent, Madam President, they spent hours and weeks on this presentation. So again, just want to thank them for
Yes.
their, their hard work in this presentation.
Mr. Robbins.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Thompson, go ahead.
I apologize if I missed that, but what are the hours that the kids are actually there and how many days? I heard him say four days a week?
Yep, so how that's going to look is Monday through Thursday, our kids will be there. They will be there from eight to three. Their teacher will be in the room with them from eight to three. On Friday, there will be no kids and that teacher will lesson plan, collaborate with other staff members in the building, like our GSRP teachers who have the exact same schedule. My goal is to mirror our preschool program to be just like our GSRP program.
Okay.
And so they'll use those Fridays along with, you know, collaborating and lesson planning. They'll be going to PD on those days.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to, I mean, we're going to follow every program next year will be eight to three. Instead, you know, this year we have GSRP, that's eight thirty to three thirty. We want to make sure that everyone is on the same schedule. It makes every, it makes it easier for parents if they have multiple kids and they're, they're not waiting around or not taking their kid out early when they're picking up multiple kids.
Okay, and do we have any other questions? Don't see any hands.
If you, if there are questions that come up along, you know, after we're done here tonight, feel free to give us a call over there. I'll do my best at running as fast as I can to make sure I get Emily or the other Emily so they can answer those. And, or you can email any of us.
Thank you all for your work. We move on, I'm sorry, Mr. Holcomb. Ms. Beaver had a question and then we need Mrs. Kennedy to read whatever we need to approve. Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Beaver.
That was just my question. I was just asking what the motion was that was recommended for us to.
Mrs. Kennedy, you're up.
So what we have is recommended the Board of Education approve the three-year-old tuition-based program to be housed at ECC as presented.
With that, do I have a maker?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, that's Scott and Mr. Holcomb is supporting. And any other discussion? I don't see any hands. Mary, can we take roll, please?
Sure. Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks you guys so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is the Capturing Kids' Hearts presentation.
I need to unmute Felicia.
There she is.
Hello, everybody. I am here to tell you a little bit about capturing kids' hearts and why it might be good for MDPS. There are four questions that I'm going to answer in my presentation. The first one is what is capturing kids' hearts?
Felicia?
Yes.
I apologize to interrupt. Are you able to share your screen?
Oh, am I not sharing? How about now? Okay. Alright, so there are four questions that I'm going to answer. The first one is what is capturing kids' hearts? Why it would be good for MDPS? How long will it take and what will we have to do? And then the burning question of how much it'll cost and what is included in that price. So what is capturing kids' hearts? It's a pre-K through twelfth grade professional development program that is offered nationwide. It's a school-level intervention that impacts student performance and behavior by enhancing school climate through improved relational and conflict management skills. The program was developed by the Flipping Group, which was founded by Flip Flipping. And it seeks to under, to establish a more collaborative school by providing each staff member with tools and strategies to build meaningful relationships and community within and beyond their classroom. Staff members who are introduced to capturing kids' hearts will be equipped to implement transformational processes focused on three things. Social, emotional wellbeing, relationship-driven climate and culture, and student connectedness. They will do this through experiential training, expert coaching, and ongoing personal life support from the Flipping Group. Many schools are out there capturing kids' hearts. Let's check out this video to see how MDPS can too.
My first act, act as superintendent was to bring in capturing kids' hearts.
When it came to behavior, we did not know how to address the issues that we were facing. So it became very hard and very difficult at times to address the needs that our students had.
Some of the struggles that we experienced early on was student discipline, teacher frustration, and lack of parental involvement. We needed help and CKH gave us the tools for that.
I've been here since first grade. I love the teachers here. I love my friends. I didn't want to leave Arrow.
What capturing kids' hearts has allowed me to do is really switch my focus and focus not on my agenda and what I want out of the student in the moment, but really on what they need. This really allowed me to really make the student feel safe and like they're cared for.
Before CKH was implemented, the atmosphere here was totally different.
The whole culture of Brazzewood High School has completely changed since starting capturing kids' hearts.
In my classroom, it was nice to see kids supporting each other.
The teachers here at Brazzewood are amazing and approach, if I ever have any problems or issues, I know I can go to any of my teachers for help.
I cry each year I graduate. This happened two years in a row. I, I cried because I am able to say something about each kid. You get teary-eyed because the parents know that what he's saying, he's saying from his heart.
What makes me feel special about coming to Arrow is that when I come, I know that I feel comforted by all of my teachers.
Being here is their safe place and we wanted to make sure that that culture stayed there for them. Our students know how to come together and our teachers know how to bring them there.
What I love about the capturing kids' hearts is that the learning doesn't stop right after training. Not only do they offer webinars, they have a campus strategist that you can literally text or call at any time. They have an online portal that will literally break down the tools for you and give you ideas and how to incorporate them within your classroom.
The capturing kids' hearts processes work and our students and staff are reaping the benefits through outstanding student achievement, better student discipline, and higher teacher retention rates.
It is not a program that you implement. It's a culture that you cultivate. The stronger you nurture it, the stronger it will grow.
Capturing Kids' Heart made all the difference for all of our scholars. We went from a school improvement to a national showcase school for capturing kids' hearts and a national blue ribbon school.
So why would capturing kids' hearts be good for MDPS? The need was determined by analyzing our current office referrals and disciplinary issues, paying specific attention to the rate and reasons for each. As a second-year administrator, I noticed that many of the student behaviors that we saw in the office could have possibly been resolved or prevented if there had been a, a stronger relationship between teachers and students as well as more consistent and clearly defined expectations and procedures. The transformational processes focused on in capturing kids' hearts will actually attend to some of those things. These processes are focused on cultivating relationships and building trust, creating accountability, improving school climate and culture, building self-managing classrooms, fostering trauma-informed care, and improving academic performance. All things that MTP, MDPS could use. Capturing Kids' Hearts is a research-based program and has been proven to improve five key school performance indicators. And those performance indicators are fewer discipline referrals, improved attendance, lower dropout rates, and less retention, higher teacher satisfaction, and higher student achievement and academic success. Schools that have implemented capturing kids' hearts report that they have strengthened their student connectedness to others by enhancing healthy bonds with teachers. They have consistent rules of They have consistent rules of conduct with reduced disciplinary escalations and referrals. They now have a dramatic reduction in truancy and dropouts. They've reduced negative behaviors like isolation, violence, and substance use. They have a significant improvement in student academic performance. They have district-wide improvements in their test scores, a higher rate of job satisfaction among teachers, and increased teacher retention and improvement in teacher recruiting. When school administrators provide ongoing training for principals and teachers in the district by design that I'm going to talk about next, the process infuses the entire district with a sense of loyalty, belonging, and enthusiasm for learning. So what's the process and how long will it take? It's actually set up in phases, and those phases are spanned over a number of years, actually. The first year is what we'll be focusing most on tonight, but I did want to give you an overview of everything that could be or should be involved. In Phase One, that's when connecting, creating connections and transforming cultures begins. That's when the entire district will be trained in capturing kids' hearts one. We will also train a very small set of district employees to become staff mentors. We will have follow-up coaching visits from our very own Flippin' Strategist, as well as the administrators receiving an additional leadership training called Blueprint. If we choose to adopt this in Phase Two, which would be the second year, we will continue by developing multipliers. At that point, all staff will be trained in capturing kids' hearts two, which is the second step. And that class actually supports brain research, teaching the staff to complete individual action plans that they will then come back and implement in their classrooms. And then that phase also incorporates a secondary program for the middle school and the high school called Lead Worthy, which would actually be a class in school for students. And then in the third phase, it would just be continued consistent coaching and implementation where the Flipping Group would still check on us to make sure that things are going well. They would help us to analyze our data and make adjustments as necessary. And then also train any new staff who may have come on board after the first two phases of training. So I told you that we would be looking at focusing on Phase One for this upcoming school year, hopefully in August, training our entire staff in capturing kids' one. I'm sorry, capturing kids' hearts one. That extensive training would be for all instructional staff to introduce the process of building and maintaining relationships. Step two would be the Process Champions, and that would take place sometime in the fall, probably October, where we would chain, train that very small group of staff members to become in-house mentors, helping to monitor and assist other staff with the program implementation. Sometime in January, our very own Flippin' Strategist would come back for coaching. I think it's one to two days that they would come just to monitor our implementation, see that teachers are using the strategies, and help us to look at our data and make adjustments as necessary. And then also, we would have ongoing throughout the entire year, what's called a premium subscription. And that premium subscription would allow us access to online tools and resources, campus progress report, and then a huge slew of professional learning and development for teachers to refer back to anytime they need it to. If you have the presentation, if you click on this link, you can actually see everything that is included in that premium subscription. The extensive training that teachers will receive in capturing kids' hearts one would be, first, how to build meaningful and productive relationships with students and colleagues. They would also learn how to create high-performing self-management, managing classrooms through team building and social contracts. They would learn how to create safe and effective learning environments, as well as learning high payoff techniques for resolving conflict, disrespect, and other negative behaviors. So how much will this cost us? The large number is seventy-three thousand. And when I first saw that, I thought, oh, wow, that is extraordinary. But Mr. Dula had reminded me that this is a whole district, district training. And so the training, the entire district for this amount is actually a pretty fair price. Though this cost does not include travel, the travel would be anywhere from one thousand to eighteen hundred, depending on how many strategists have to come and how long they stay. So if it doesn't include the travel, what does that include? It includes the capturing kids' hearts one, where teachers will be trained in that two-day extensive training. It includes the training while they will come back and also train those process champions. It includes the Campus Traction Pack, where our strategist comes back to work with us personally or work with teachers personally in their classrooms, and then we receive that premium subscription with all of the online resources and training that's involved with that. Here you'll see an actual breakdown of everything that is included in those four things that I just mentioned more specifically. And it actually itemizes it for you as well. The optional, the additional options for future phases include the capturing kids' hearts two that I mentioned. There is a coaching component that we could also add in. Leadership Blueprint, we're actually trying to incorporate into Phase One. Since we have so few administrators, we're looking at, seeing how they can do that for us at no additional cost. And then some other options are Organization Blueprint, as well as the Lead Worthy Secondary Course that I spoke of for our high school and middle school students. If you are interested in reading more about capturing kids' hearts and some of the and, sorry about that, some of the transformation stories, you can click this link. It also tells you about all of the research that supports it and some affirmations from schools that are actually using it. I'd like to end with a quote from Flip Flippin', who is the founder of Capturing Kids' Hearts. He says, "If you have a kid's heart, you can have a kid's mind." And he's right about that. If kids trust you and they know how much you there's an old saying that I used to use a lot that says, "Kids don't care how much you know unless they know how much you care." And that's so true. Once you build a relationship with them and let them know that you are really working for their best interests at heart, they will listen and be open to learning whatever it is that you would have them to learn.
And you know, kids have a tendency to match their favorite subject area with their favorite teacher. So if you ask any student, whether high school or, you know, what's your favorite subject area? Sometimes they'll name the teacher because they have that connection to the teacher. And because they have that connection with the teacher, and they, and every kid should have that that teacher that they're connected to, that they could go to for anything, they have a tendency to perform better. They will, they will perform better. And I've, you know, thirteen years teaching experience has, has taught me one thing. I wasn't the best teacher in, by any means, but I knew how to form relationships. And because we form relationships, we could get students to perform. So although I wasn't the best support system, say in science or math, but because I connected with, with kids, or Ms. Hemingway, or, or any, any teacher that connects, they have a tendency to help that teacher, that student, perform at a higher, higher level.
Hey, do we need a motion and support to go into discussion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Ms. Chambliss? Do we have support?
I'll support Ms. Holder.
Thank you.
Gloria's muted.
Is support will open for discussion. Any questions?
Mary, Gloria, Gloria's muted. Mary?
Thank you.
Okay, Gloria, did you have a question? I do. This is the first we're hearing about this program. Are there not other programs out there that we checked into for this type of thing? I guess I'm, I'm just looking at this and saying, you know, why is this the first we're hearing about it?
I apologize. I thought I reported on when we went to the training about two months ago when I sent you an update about the training that Felicia and I had about that seminar that we went to that was capturing kids' hearts.
Okay. Okay.
More information, Ms. Thompson, about the program?
No, I just wondered why this was the first we were hearing about it.
I didn't think it was the first. I apologize. I didn't think it was the first time I had shared it, but I apologize if it is.
Okay. Okay, next up, Ms. Beaver.
Ms. Chambliss had her hand up first. She can ask, just in case it's the same question I'm thinking.
All right, Ms. Chambliss, you have the floor.
I just wanted to say that I have heard, you know, emails and things like that about capturing hearts. And so I did a lot of research on it. I actually watched that video on YouTube before. And I really think that it's something we should consider. I think that if you're not necessarily comfortable with it tonight, maybe you don't feel like you have enough information, maybe table it for a week or so. Because I did go online and honestly, I can find countless amazing reviews about it. And, you know, administrators talking about how well it's done for their district, and I haven't really found very much pushback. So, and then I just wanted to ask one question. Do you know Mr. Dula had from the, I know that when you came back from the seminar, you were in emails like raving about this. Did they mention, like, how soon we could expect possibly to see results? Like, do they show that the program starts to, like, kind of show a benefit right away? Or does it take a few years? Or, like, how does that work?
I don't recall a guarantee on time, but
Okay.
also a few things. One, this is the one that we're recommending. This is the one I'm recommending to the board. Two, in a two-day seminar, I was blown away, just in two days, just sitting there as a spectator, watching colleagues. I believe from Oakland County, we ran into Lake Orion and we ran into a few other school districts, I think one other school district. But we met people from all across the state. In, in, in a two-day seminar, I was so blown away. And I've been in education since oh-one. And it doesn't take, it takes a whole lot because in, in education, you tend to see it all, right? You tend to see it all. And I was just blown away. And I, I believe that in my heart, you, I've always believed that, that you, you win a kid's heart and they will go to battle for you. They will perform for you. They will do what is asked of you. And when it's time for you to reprimand or correct behavior, because it's founded in love, they tend to, to receive it better. And they don't, they don't deem you as, as an enemy, but instead, a mentor who's trying to correct some behavior so they could, so they could excel. And again, this is at the high-end cost. We're presenting you the high-end cost. There is an opportunity for grant, but we didn't want to provide you something that we weren't sure we were going to get. So, so the cost will either be seventy-three thousand or less based on if we get grant specifically from the Flippin' Group.
Okay, Crystal?
Yeah, I had a question. Rebecca didn't ask it, so go ahead. Mr. Dula had, this would cover, the seventy-three thousand would be for until two thousand twenty-four, correct? Was that what it said? No, Ms. Hemingway? What year was it?
No.
Sorry.
Two thousand twenty-two, wasn't it?
So that would cover
One year.
Phase one.
Just one year?
Over our phase one.
And does anybody know offhand how much we spend a year in PD? Because this would be kind of considered, could you integrate that as PD?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and Dr. Hill, I'll let Dr. Hill. What we're trying to do is separate the programming from cost, so Dr. Hill will speak to that. Again, this is not, we're not trying to pull this from general fund, but I'll let Dr. Hill talk about that. I know last year alone, we spent nearly, Dr. Hill, correct me if I'm wrong, nearly a hundred thousand dollars in PD just for PPE and COVID preparation. Dr. Hill, do you want to speak a little bit about professional development?
Maybe not.
Mary, you got to unmute her. Mary?
Can you turn my camera on as well? Thank you. Sorry, I was unmute, I was muted. But in terms of professional development, last year, I want to say, I believe we spent about fifty thousand dollars. But I can double-check that because I wasn't prepared to tell you how much, you know, how much professional development we spent as a district. But I'm thinking about fifty grand and about fifty grand. And this, this has been put in the S or two grant, this cost. So, you know, I just want you to weigh that in there as well.
This would, this would also meet, Madam President, the thirty hours of PD that we are required to provide our teaching staff.
All righty. And we had two more hands up. Ms. Scott and then Mr. Holcomb, please.
Yes, I would be in favor of tabling this for further information. I personally know teachers that have worked in this, with this program. And currently, I'm not in favor of this program. If we tabled it, maybe, and I got some more information, which I have clicked on the links and I've researched this since this got brought up, when I found out that Mr. Dula had was going to this training, asked questions, and I would like to see it tabled. I don't want to turn down something just because I'm not completely there with this because I think we need other things in our school district besides this. So I'm in favor of tabling this. If we could table this, if we vote on it tonight, I'm not in favor of this. That's all I got to say.
Does she need support? If she's making a formal motion to table, she needs support. Beth, are you making a formal motion?
I would like to make the motion to table this in a couple, a couple of weeks or next board meeting. So yes, I'm making that motion to table this, please.
And I'll support. Okay. Okay. If I believe, and tell me if I'm wrong, that we continue with discussion and then when we vote, we vote on the table first, correct?
I just don't know how we can have two motions going at once.
Well, the last one that's made is the one that you vote on first. So that much I know for absolutely certain. Mr. Holcomb, you were up next.
All right, Edwina, you said that the SIR fund will pay for some of this?
Yeah, the, the SIR two grant will pick up the whole seventy-three thousand dollars.
So it's not going to, it wouldn't cost the district nothing?
No, not out of the general fund, but out of grant funds.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Holcomb?
No.
Okay, Ms. Chambliss, go ahead.
Um, just two quick pieces. First is, with the SIR grant, wouldn't we pay the seventy-three thousand and then apply for it to be reimbursed? And it could possibly be denied? And then also, no?
No, the way that the grant funds work, they approve it beforehand. Yes, you use your general fund to pay the bill. And then you get reimbursed. They'll tell you, yes, and it is an approvable professional development item. You know.
Okay, so if we did this, then the seventy three thousand would cover the thirty hours of PD for all of our staff. Which would probably cost the district fifty to a hundred thousand anyways. And then it will come out of Esser grant money and not our general fund. So it'd be paid for through the grant and it. Would cover everything they need. If we table this. How long are we thinking about tabling it and what information is needed so that the next time it comes around, everybody feels comfortable?
Okay, Mrs. Thompson, go ahead.
I had one more question. You said that. Ms. Hemingway said that there would be teachers who would be. Support teachers?
She's muted.
Be unmuted.
There would be mentor teachers.
Mentor teachers.
Yep.
These mentor teachers, are we going to have to then pay them a stipend to be?
No, they're selected based on. The ones that are jumping right in, that are implementing it with fidelity that are successful. Then they become the mentor. This is different than the the mentor you're thinking about being a teacher mentor. Which a teacher mentor that is a small compensation. This has nothing to do with that. There is no additional. Compensation for being selected as one of those mentor coaches for this PD.
Okay, I don't see any more hands. I had a couple of questions. The the cost per year was covered. We know we get our money. We actually have a couple of users, but it's not. Ongoing. Is this cost per per year going to be a? Open ended until until or unless we quit the program? Or it's a couple of years and then that's it? Just so that we know what the the. Time block is and you can answer that and then I'll ask my other two questions.
Ms. Hemingway, is the second year lesser amount? Are you able to unmute? But. She's not able to unmute. It would not be an ongoing. This is not a reoccurring seventy three thousand. This is to deploy the program, get it going, and then we'll be self sustaining after after that. They provide some coaching and they slowly slowly release us.
I believe the second year, there would be a cost that we would incur for teachers to be trained in capturing kids' hearts too. If we chose for them to do that, they obviously encourage you to do that because it's just the next level or the next step in the program. But if we didn't, it would not disparage what we had paid for in that phase one. It would only add to it if we decided to go on to phase two. The other cost in phase two are the lead worthy program. For our secondary students and we didn't get into what a cost would be for that. But again, I we also didn't, I didn't personally. Research that really well, so I wouldn't be able to speak to exactly what that is. Again, these are options that. Would enhance what we learned during that phase one, but they don't not having them does not negate what we've learned in phase one.
Um, I have a couple of other questions. I'm going to put them out there and then you can answer them. In whatever order that you want. Um, the lead worthy, I almost think that the high school and junior high are the places where we need this kind of training the most. In self confidence and tolerance of other people. So it's almost a little sad that that you start with. And and I understand the program's a program, but that we start the second year with. In my opinion, anyway, the group that probably would benefit the most.
But. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Holder, but to clarify, it's not necessarily that we're. Starting with just the the elementary or lower L, the entire district. Staff will be trained during that phase one. There isn't necessarily a program. Component that is a class for the elementary. I think that they wait until that second year in phase two to implement the lead worthy. Class at that secondary level because they want teachers to already be trained and to have relationships that. Will enhance that class before trying to implement that. If you're still learning and building relationships, then that class may not mean as much or it may not be as effective. And so they wait until that phase one is done, until everyone has received their initial training to build the foundation to make the lead worthy class work.
Great. Okay, now I know we don't have room for many electives, especially at the high school level. Is made if we were making this a would it be a requirement or an elective? In in our in our fantasy world of Shangri-La? And we are in this program and we are in the second year and we are in the lead worthy. Would the kids then have to choose this over? I don't know, band, music, gym, whatever, or would this somehow be a a permanent? Component to their daily schedule? What what is the best guess? I realize you haven't gone that far, but if everything was in a perfect world, what would it look like?
First, we're trying, we're we actually are trying to bring more electives to the high school because they don't have that many at all. So we're trying to get more electives and this would be one of them. Correct lead worthy would be an elective. Almost like student council, someone who is looking to be that student mentor, they would pick in then and then we would have student leaders. Similar, what we're trying to appeal to is every kid's kind of taste bud, right? So we we have the agriculture kids that are seeking agriculture. You got the advanced placement. You got the fine arts. You got the music. I believe, this is just my opinion, that we probably need three or four or maybe five additional electives at the high school. Just to provide some options for our students. Right now, we're very limited. On options on what kids could select. This would just enhance our students.
So it wouldn't reduce, it wouldn't, well, I guess. Maybe it would. They might have to choose this over something else, but all right. And then on benchmarks, explain a little bit about what. Benchmarks would look like to see what kind of progress was being made.
Ms. Hemingway, you want to handle that one?
She's muted again.
Here we go. Yeah, I can unmute myself this time. So the things that, and let me actually go back to. The presentation.
I know you said you get benchmarks and you could follow your progress. I was just wondering. What that might look like.
I closed it. So there are five things that were most important that they pretty much guaranteed would happen if we implement the program with fidelity. The first one is an increase of student achievement, higher test scores. There would also be. Less retention and lower or rate of truancy. There would be a higher rate of teacher success or I'm sorry, teacher satisfaction.
Higher rate of student attendance.
A higher attendance rate.
Yeah.
Discipline referrals.
Okay, so those are the benchmarks. Okay.
And those are all measurable.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and those are all measurable and we could provide, we could say, here's, here's where we are. We might have a seventy five percent attendant rate and then after implementing it for six months, if we see that go from seventy five. To eighty five, we we could attribute part of that to the to the professional development or the program of capturing kids' hearts.
Okay.
I wanted to add one thing.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Ms. Hill.
Just just a clarity, you know, when I seen it implemented in, you know, another district, Southfield. It was a a cultural change. It's it's a it it changes the culture of the building or the buildings. You know, the teachers act a certain way, the students respond a certain way, and the students interact with each other. A better way or a different way as a result of implementing this program. It's a it changes the culture of the building.
That's the goal. Okay, Ms. Scott, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Okay, no disrespect here to anyone. Honestly, it's just disappointing that again, the reason I want to table this is because. The part two of.
Nope, she just froze.
High school, just like the dance classes.
Miss Scott, you froze. Will you restart? I'm sorry.
Okay, I, okay. So no disrespect to anybody here when I say this. The reason why, again, I want to table this is because it's disappointing that we didn't look ahead to the part two of this. For twenty twenty two because just like the dance classes and other classes that came for a year and were gone the next. If we had the lead class in the junior high and the high school and the kids really loved it and looked forward to it, now. It would be disappointing if we'd have to come to them and now they come back to the school year and it's not there. So again, we don't know anything about the part two of this, how much it's going to cost us. I wished we would do. And have more information, let the board ask further questions, get more information. I just feel that we're not. Ready. To, there's so many questions that we have in regards to this. Like I hate to bring something something into the school and take them, take it back from them. We we danced, they loved it and we took it away from them. We, you know, I don't want to see us giving them something and taking something back just because we quote, we can't afford it.
Can I clarify that or just that little small part? If we invest in the lead worthy class, it's a training and a curriculum, the materials we would have. So it isn't something that we would necessarily have to keep paying for every year. Once the teachers are trained and once we have the resources, we can keep implementing that. So and and that is the plan. That's.
If we, is what you meant to say, if we train the teachers this year and they're not here next year or whatever, that's what I'm saying. It's going to be a constant training. So we don't know, there's not enough information given to the board, I feel, that we can make a decision on this.
I I understand that. I guess I'm I was just trying to gather for myself what information it is that you need. So we try to get it for you.
Right, right. Um, okay, Ms. Chamberlain, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say. I support the program because I feel like we're gonna pay fifty to a hundred thousand training staff with PD anyways. So if we take a risk and we train them with this and it's not successful after a year, that would not be a great thing, but it is also a chance that it does work. And with the PD that we're already paying for, we then get a culture shift that spreads district wide. So, you know, with the professional development that the staff already gets, I'm I we have great staff, but I don't think that their direct professional development. Impacts the whole district. This would and it's a cost we're already going to pay and this also comes out of Esser. But I just wanted to know, have we spoken with the staff? Do the staff have any idea about this? Have we even like? Asked them if it's something they're interested in? Because if they're not vested in it, then it's not going to work, but have we? I I don't know if you came here first and then the next step is to take it to the staff or does the staff know about it at all and have they responded? Like, are they ready to do this?
No, we, so. We we have not presented to the staff and we can't present something to the staff that we don't know. That we could bring to them, right? So we can't say we want to do this. But then not have the approval. So we're we're seeking the approval and now. The the requirement to provide professional development is is on the rests on the shoulders of the district. So the district has to provide professional development. The district could implement the vision. In the in the pathway that they want to proceed forward. And so what what greater what greater? Approach can you take than winning a kid's heart? I mean, I I've heard you say it where your kids are so attached to a teacher and and and. The first thing out of their mouth is not, wow, they really taught algebraic algebraic expression really well. No, that teacher connected. That teacher connected with them. So when someone says, you know what, Ms. Hemingway is my favorite teacher. Not because she was a reading specialist or taught science. When they talk about, you heard that that student talk about Mr. Janigan at graduation. It wasn't because he was a great scientist because Mr. Janigan connected with that with Claire. Remember when Claire spoke about that? It's that connection piece. This is this is something that is research based. And are we going to have one hundred percent buy in? No, but if we have seventy five or eighty or ninety percent buy in. Could then there be a culture shift? Absolutely, one hundred percent.
What I was going to add to that, Ms. Chamberlain, is. It also starts from the top down and though we haven't brought it to the staff, we have talked about it as administrators. And it is the the ownership is on us to infuse it into our buildings and to lead and get our staff on board as well.
Um, Ms.?
Ms. Hemingway is, I know this is is probably the sooner the better, but is there a timeframe or a deadline? To sign up for this program? Do we have a little bit of leeway? To look into the program like Ms. Scott said and make a decision or is it? Now?
I don't think that it is so time sensitive that we need to make, we have to make a decision tonight. But it is time sensitive in that we need to get on their schedule and on their books. This is a very popular program and as I said, it's nationwide. And because we want our the the dates to coincide with the time that we have professional event, professional development. Available for the staff in August, which is the same time where everybody in the country will probably be doing professional development. We want to try to get on the books.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I had a question to Ms. Scott and Mrs. Thompson. What kind of timeframe would on you request? And what questions? Do you think that you would like more? Answers to?
Are you talking to me?
Both of you, so that when we vote on tabling this, we know what it is.
So we have, so we have three meetings this month, three more meetings this month. So it's not like we couldn't put this in front of whatever we're doing, training or whatever. It would be a five, five or ten minute thing to vote on it, number one. Number two is, I would like to see the part two of this and what are, I would like, okay, so I, Mr. Dula had right, he did tell us that. He and Mrs. Hemingway had gone to the training. That's all that we got until we got our board packet and we really didn't even have, I didn't have this presentation until I picked it up today. So I I mean, I, when he, I researched it myself, but I don't actually have all the questions. That I needed to have to ask prior to this meeting because I wasn't given time. To what we were actually, what part, if you actually go and researches, there's lots of things in that thing. I know teachers that have worked in it. In Bloomfield Hills, in Southfield, in Franklin. So I've reached out and asked those questions and what Mrs. Hemingway is. But she's telling us is nothing what the teachers had come back to me with. I just would like us to. Investigate more. You know, come back with the part two of it. What what if we want to go on to part, you know, the part two, how much is that going to cost us? Like looking ahead, so it wouldn't be something, I'm not saying it's not, it would not be a good program. I just think we need further information. Like if we continue this in. Twenty twenty two, is that, how much is that going to cost us or is this something we're going to yank from the kids? And if if we're not going to be in a position where we, we we can project to see if we're going to have money for the for part two, we can project that. So if we. Well, Dr. Hill probably could project that. If she could project that and just come back with and give us a little bit of. Dr. Hill probably could project that. If she could project that and just come back with, and give us a little bit of time to let us. Really think about this. And I know there, this is a professional development. I'm not saying that. This is not the end-all, be-all. There could be something else. If this is the first thing that we looked into, like, there's a lot of questions I have to this. That we are spending way too much time on it tonight. Our agendas are, we're not even a quarter way through our agenda, really, so. I'm just, I would like to see us table it for us to grasp and get more information, is all.
So besides the cost of phase two, is there anything else specific, um, that you would like for me to ask and, um?
I don't, I, I, no, not right at this moment. I could email you when I thought about it more from what you presented to us today. I'm sure I would have a list of questions, or for Mr. Dullad, however you wanted us to handle it, but that's where I'm at with it.
Yes.
Couple things. Ms. Provenzola has her hand up. Two, Esser money carries all the way to twenty twenty, twenty-five. Just reminder that Esser money carries you all the way to twenty twenty-five. Um, and, but again, if you, if you. If you feel you're not prepared, if you could tell us what it would take us, what we would need to get you prepared. Uh, and present it, we will. It does take a lot of planning, a- as, as you could tell from the summer school and preschool. It's not like you give us the green light and then it, it happens. It takes a lot. Behind the scenes to get ready, once you do give us a green light. And, uh, Mary, if you could unmute, Ms. Provenzola, please.
She can unmute.
I just, I just wanted to say, um, a, a couple of things, because, um, this was something. That, um, we ended up hiring a few teachers that were all from the same charter school at Madison Elementary. And quite a few that are beloved teachers that have wonderful relationships at Madison Elementary. And when we talked to them about PD they had experienced in the past, it was, they were all in the same charter school, and they all experienced capturing kids' hearts. Which is one of the reasons why it became a thing Ms. Hemingway and I talked about and wanted to bring to Madison Elementary initially. And then it became something like, maybe we could bring this district wide, because it is something dear to our hearts to make sure that. Like, there's positive, loving relationships built throughout our school and our district. So those teachers and all of our teachers, I love them. I think our building is amazing, our teachers are amazing. So none of this is to say that any one teacher is better or worse than another, but there, there is a difference. You can see the difference between the types of relationships that are made from the teachers that have gone through this program. And the ones that haven't. And there, there's a, there's a way that they connect to the students and the way that they interact and the way that they. Um, greet them at the door, the way that they talk to them, the way that they just help them problem-solve. That is, that's, that's. Just slightly different, and it's a change in the whole culture, like it was talked about, um. Previously with Ms. Hemingway. The teacher, the training for the initial year, again, like Ms. Hemingway talked about. Would also train teachers to be those leaders that would continue the training, so it's not something that we would expect to drop off after the first year. It's something that we would train our own staff members up to be teacher leaders that would be able to continue that training. Since they've gone through it and been the experts now, a- and then can train in the future. The class only comes in at the second year if you choose to pay for it, so it's not something that's taken away after the first year, because it's not implemented the first year. It's only implemented if you pay for it the second year, and i- i- and if you choose to go in that direction. It's not a requirement. But an add, like an additional thing to the program, like Ms. Hemingway said. So I, I just wanted to throw out there that, um. Those things, and to talk about my own anecdotal evidence with the evidence with those teachers that I have. And seeing the relationships that they build at Madison Elementary. And if you want to ask me questions, is that a question for me or for?
Um, I'm not sure. I'm gonna ask, um, Mrs. Thompson next, because she's been waiting patiently, so we'll find out.
Uh, I guess my thing is, if, is this the only program out there that teaches teachers how to. Assimilate with kids, work with kids, get, get them involved. Because, you know, this is the only program that you've brought to us. Are there other programs out there that we may want to look into?
Yeah.
The other thing is, is I noticed that it says it does not cover transportation. Where do the teachers have to go for this training?
So, this is the one that we're presenting, this is the one we're recommending to the board. Um, transportation is not for our teachers, but if a trainer has to fly in. That's the transportation. We, in this district, we don't fly in anyone out for any training. So that's. Um, trans- uh, transportation, it's for the presenter to come here, so they could do the, uh, site-based monitoring.
So that's an additional cost above and beyond this.
That would, that was, that was what was presented, between one thousand and eighteen hundred is what Ms. Hemingway addressed.
Okay.
And again, that's the, on the high end, we qualify for a grant, but we didn't want to tell you that because we don't know what we qualify for. So that's on the high end. It'd be, it could be less than seventy-three thousand.
Okay. You're, you have any other questions, Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Scott, floor is yours.
Uh, Mrs. Provenzola, it would have been perfect if those teachers were present and could speak upon that. So that would be something that would, that I personally, in my opinion, I would like to have seen the teachers that work in our district. How it helped them where they used to work at a charter school.
Okay, so, do we have any other questions? We need to vote on the table. Oh, Mrs. Chamber, oh, Ms. Chamberless, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that, Ms. Thompson, I completely respect what you're saying, because obviously, like, we all. We, we know, even if we're not in education, we know there are a lot of programs out there, but. At some, I just, I believe that our instinct is to want to make sure we're doing the best, to make sure that we're doing what's right. To give the children the best. And so that makes us ask questions, like, is this the best program? But we also have to say, do we trust Ms. Hemingway and Mr. Dullad that went to the training? And Ms. Provenzola, who believes she's seen results? Do we trust them as the administrators, because they are the ones, like, with the kids, they are the educators? And I know what you're, when you're saying it, that it's not like. That you're saying anything negative to anybody, but I just want to say, because I feel it too. I oftentimes want to say, how do we know? You know, tell me more. How do you know? And then I have to keep remembering what Rod Green said, and like, that's, if they bring us this program, they have to have reasons why they believe it's the best for our district.
To add to that, Ms. Chamberless, um, the, no one knows for sure. Um, you, you do your research and you do what feels like is the best fit for your, um, clientele. Are there other pro- programs out there that are good? Probably, for sure. Just like there are many different curriculums and curriculum companies, and it's not to say that, um. One of them won't, wouldn't be good for one school while the other is good for another. It's what we do with the information that we're given once we're trained. It's how we implement it and how we keep it going. And sustain the momentum of it and use it to help our kids. Um, there are tons of character education and social emotional learning programs out there. But this one spoke to us because of the connection to relationship building. That's something that will be beneficial for these students for the rest of their lives. Um, and like I said, that's not to say that there aren't other programs out there that are just as good. But what we take from it and use it to, to build our district is what will, will make it the best for us.
Okay, Mrs. Scott, go ahead.
Uh, just to touch on what Ms. Scott said, we do actually have four more meetings in this month. Uh, the eleventh, of course, being, uh, a facility, um, meeting. So I think we should, should we. Pick a date that we can, um, reopen this, when, I mean, if we're gonna vote on tabling it, and then maybe, um. Sarah can have some of those teachers present, and questions can be answered prior to the meeting. So that everybody has a good understanding. We've got the eleventh, fourteenth, fifteenth, and thirtieth. As you said, if we're gonna table it, or vote to table it, that we should have a date when we're going to reopen it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, well, I was gonna see if the table passes first.
Okay.
To decide on a date, if indeed it does.
Okay, sorry about that.
If I, no, you're good. If we have no more questions.
One more.
Mr. Holcomb, go ahead.
Okay, so. We're gonna table it till, uh, next meeting coming up here within this month. And that won't, that won't put us in a time problem, right? Uh, Mrs. Hemingway?
Um, I can't say for sure that dates that we want, you know, may not be taken, but I know that. The consultants that we are working with have promised to, to try and work with us and, and get us what we need. So, like I said, I don't think it's emergent that we make this decision tonight, but we do want to make sure that. We are cognizant of the time, so that we can try to get on the schedule and get the dates that we want and the strategists that we prefer. To come out and do our training.
Well, it sounds really good to me, and, but I, I want everybody to be comfortable with it, so, okay.
I am looking. Okay, so if we have no more questions, the first thing that we're gonna do is vote to table. And then if that passes, we need to set a date, and I think we all agree, the sooner the better. And then we need to move on with our agenda. So, first thing is, Ms. Kennedy, roll call for. The table on the, um.
Madam President, it's yes, the vote would be yes to table it, no to not table it, correct?
Correct, yes.
I just wanted to clarify for everyone.
Yep.
Okay, um, we'll start with Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
No.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Action passes to table. We need to decide what date.
Right, okay, so the eleventh is.
That doesn't give you very much time. That's this Friday.
Right. Well, that's, I was just gonna ask, if the fourteenth would be enough time to possibly. Cause, uh, I know this is the end of the school year, and it's like, you know, you teachers don't have anything going on at the end of the school year. So, um, is that enough time to gather this bit of information, um? So that we could have it next Monday, is that okay?
Just to be clear, you want the cost of year two. And you want the testimonial of the teachers, is what I heard you say, correct? You want the cost of year two, and you want the testimonial of the, the staff, correct?
And any questions that, that the board may have, whoever you want those questions to go to, Mr. Dullad, whether it be you. Or Mrs. Hemingway, Mrs. Provenzola, I'm not sure.
Send the questions to me, um, and then I'll be happy to disseminate that information.
Okay, and Ms. Thompson, did you have anything else that you wanted to add to that?
Well, I was just gonna, he said we could send him questions. I'll just send him my questions.
Okay, great. All right, with that, um. The fourteenth, is that okay for everybody?
Uh, it's next Monday.
Yes, is. Some affirmation from somebody.
It's okay, as long as we get our questions and. Um, those are questions answered before the fourteenth. It's, I'm fine with the fourteenth.
Okay, um, okay, so it will be the fourteenth. It will be on our agenda as a, a voting item.
Thank you.
Alrighty, all right, we need to move on to superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam President. Do you need a break? It is, uh.
No.
Two hours since, um, we started presenting the capturing kids' hearts. It's, it's almost ten o'clock. Do you need a break?
I, I'm seeing everybody shake their head, so let's keep moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
So for the superintendent report, um, I, I, we started talking about, um, June eleventh, the board meeting. Uh, what I would like to do is invite the public to join us on June eleventh. We are doing our facilities discussion. Uh, and infrastructure discussion, um, where the board will start discuss, discussion. About a, uh, draft, um, preliminary qualification, where they select, uh, based on the needs and infrastructure. Um, that is presented before them. We have completed the second facilities assessment. We will have both of those. There, it will be a discussion, uh, and then if the board, um, chooses at that point to. Take action, then we could do that then. Uh, want to remind, again, so June eleventh, seven PM. It's a Zoom meeting to discuss facility infrastructure, um, and needs of the district. We sent out, uh, we want the community to know, we sent out a survey, and, uh, we're asking them to, um. You know, have a look at that survey, provide as much information, uh, to us as possible, uh, on feedback. Want to also invite the community, uh, parents to do a building walkthrough, where we are going to. Go through every part of the high school to see, to see everything. Um, um, the good, bad, and ugly, everything, um, to, to ease some people's mind. Um, a- and to show, um, some of our needs at the same time. Um, and so that will be June tenth at seven PM. We will also have. Uh, the facility study from Performance Services there, if people want to have that. Um, again, we are inviting the board, but, uh, want to remind the community that the board is there as, um. Participants, if they choose to go, um, and they're not there to have discussions or anything regarding, um, board business. Um, but they're there as, as, uh, visitors like everyone else. Um, graduation was a huge success. I think people were, um, um, we had a few trustees there. We had the bleachers packed. It, it was amazing. I think parents were excited, um, uh, to see their graduates. I think the graduates were excited to have some kind of normalcy. I know they were super excited, and it was a great turnout. Um, I had the opportunity to attend state finals. Track me, uh, near Grand Rapids this Saturday. And let me tell you, I've never been proud of, of, of these gentlemen, Roy Payne, Jalen Logan. Uh, Malik Munson, Antonio Thompson, they were, and Coach, um. Uh, Jones, uh, Kate, Kelsey Jones. They represented the district with pride. Uh, it was amazing. Um, I had chills just watching them compete, uh, in that four-by-one-hundred relay. Unfortunately, we, you know, we didn't win. Uh, but what a great performance. And one of the young men is only a freshman. And he wasn't, he was competing against. I, I've never seen men that big that were high school seniors. I mean, they, they were. Two feet taller than me, bigger than me, and they were just all muscle, and I, I was, I was in shock. Um, and they did a phenomenal. Uh, the boys' baseball team, the girls' softball team. Uh, it, it's just been a wonderful spring season for sports, just a wonderful season. Um, them adapting with quarantining and, and, and things like that. What, what great kids and sportsmanship. And I just want to give, then, the, the boys' baseball, the girls' softball, the track. Um, next year, I talked to Kelsey and asked her, uh, if we could extend track to do cross-country. Uh, and, and expand on that, and she's eager to do that. She's eager to jump in. Um, and we're excited. And, and not to brag, but I was Kelsey's, um, Spanish teacher. And so, you know, I, I, I got to tease her a little bit about, uh, back in the day when we had the student-staff basketball game. Um, but that was a, a, a nice experience. We also want to announce that, um. I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Typically, we have carnival in April. Uh, but Skirbeck has allowed us to move, uh, the carnival to June twenty-third. And I think the timing could not have been more perfect. Um, June twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. The carnival will be here at the high school, um. I think the timing couldn't be more perfect with the removing of restrictions and, and people actually trying to gather. I really think that this is gonna unify and bring families together and allow them to celebrate in a safe, in a safe, um, uh, in a safe way. Uh, again, that's June twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. If you have questions regarding, uh, cost uh, or what is required, uh, Jamie will be prepared to discuss that. I'm just kinda announcing some of the dates. Vaccination clinic was a huge success. The first time we had about twenty-five students. We have two more clinics on June twenty-second and then June twenty-ninth. June twenty-second is for the second dose of Pfizer for the families that took the first dose on June first. June twenty-ninth is also Pfizer vaccine open, uh, to everyone. Um, we talked about the face mask requirements being lifted. Uh, I would be remiss if I, I would not honor and celebrate a, a few people. Linda Hurcat and Leslie Rennie Kegabine, uh, they are both retiring. And combined them two have over sixty years. I'm not trying to age them. I'm not trying to embarrass anyone. But combined, they have over sixty years of experience. And the hard work and the dedication and, um, i- is not gone unnoticed. Um, I, I, I've, I've known both of them nine years, uh, and both tremendous people. Uh, I'm still trying to get Linda to consider retiring for a little bit and then come back after thirty days to, you know, help us out with testing. I'm trying to also convince Leslie to do something similar, um, but I'm trying to give them their space. Uh, old business, so, so I, I really like that idea. I know we didn't put it on the agenda. Uh, but old business, uh, when Rod Green talked about that, I know there was discussion about, long-distance charges and why we're being so expensive. Uh, we're going with Clear Rate. That's gonna happen this summer. Uh, we're going from AT&T to Clear Rate. And then we are also signing up for the four to six-digit code. Uh, I think that would alleviate some concerns from anyone because everyone will have their own unique code. Uh, and I didn't want, I didn't want the trustees to think that that is going, um, unanswered. Um, and so, I believe, uh, again, Linda Hurcat, I talked about Leslie. I, I believe, Madam President, that is all my, um, superintendent's report that I have at this time.
Uh, okay, Ms. Thompson?
I, I have a question for Mr. Abdullah. Could, could you please address the legal fees and why they didn't get paid for three months to the public?
Okay, so the reason why in the check registry, the legal fees, um, are, are three months behind or, you know, three months worth, because I, I get the detailed version. I'm the only one that gets the detailed version. Well, I didn't know that unless I request or I notify Joanne to requi-, um, to request the undetailed versions, that they don't automatically come. I, we have sensed that that was a, a misstep on my part. Uh, we have since remedied the, uh, situation, um, again, and that's why I sent the entire board, all the legal, both from Trune and from, uh, Clark Hill. And I went back as much as possible. Um, again, that was a misstep on, on our part. We assumed that things were happening, but we have since uh, corrected that issue and it won't be an issue going forward anymore.
Alrighty, um, Ms. Scott, quick question and then we gotta move on.
Mr. Abdullah, you spoke about, um, on June eleventh, um, it's, you were inviting the public for, um, the facility discussions. Does that mean that the public can ask questions and will get res- an answer back or? Do you know what I mean? Like, i- is this just like they have to talk for three minutes and nobody's gonna talk, nobody will respond back to them or is it a que- Q and A session?
I, I, uh, this is a regular board meeting, but we're treating it as a workshop where we could actually have dialogue and discussion. But if the board then wants to take actions, so the public is always welcome at every meeting. And again, I don't control the agenda. The, the board does. The, the board controls the, um, uh, the structure of the meeting. Um, but e- every board meeting, the public is allowed to ask the question, so. Ask it indirectly to me when I'm doing the site visit, when I'm showing them. We're gonna also have Q and A there. For them right away. We'll write it down and then I'll add, address it on the eleventh.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I was trying to clarify. Would there be on the, so the, on the eleventh, it's really just the public three minute and they don't get a response back? Because the way you said it, I, it sounded like it was gonna be a Q and A type meeting on the eleventh, which it really won't be, but on the tenth, you will be, you'll be answering questions or you'll write, if you don't know the answer, you'll write it down and you can get back.
Exactly.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. That was all I had. Thank you.
Okay, ah, Crystal Beaver, you have the floor.
Um, just really fast, Mr. Abdullah. Um, when the post about the carnival started going around, there was a community member that was, um, a little apprehensive regarding parking and trash. Um, another community member had mentioned possibly the idea of pulling in our NHS, um, since they need volunteer hours anyways to see if maybe that they could, um, you know, go along and pick up trash and possibly put up other cans. So I had told them when that had came up that I would bring that up to your attention.
I, I think that's a wonderful idea of high school students, uh, to get community, um, service hours. If they wanna represent, uh, whether it's Student Council or National Honor Society or student athletes, um, if they wanna do some, you know, um, some volunteering, I think that's a wonderful idea. Uh, I'm not opposed to anyone volunteering, um, to, to help out, including, including parent groups. Uh, I mean, we're not gonna turn down anyone that wants to volunteer to help us oversee. I know last year Beth rode around in, um, with, with a golf cart with, uh, um, Amanda. I, I don't know if we could do the golf cart this time, but, uh, we want.
We passed out glow sticks. Sorry, everyone. I have to go on off-camera for a second, but I'm right here, okay?
Yeah, so we're, we're open to anyone. Um, again, however, if a volunteer is new to volunteer, we do have to do that background check. But if we have the background check already on file, then that's, that's okay.
Yeah, that was it. I just told them I would mention it to you. So it was on your radar. That's all.
So, we are done with superintendent report. We are now moving on to section three A, um, approval of minutes, special board meetings, April twenty-seventh, May fourth, May eighteenth, June first, and regular board meeting, May third, twenty-twenty-one. Do I have a maker and support?
Madam President, I'll make the motion.
I'll support. This is Beth.
So, Ms. Ott is the maker, Ms. Scott is support. Any discussion? See none. Mary, please take a roll.
Crystal Beaver? Rebecca Shambles? Mark Holcomb? Cindy Holder? Deborah Ott? Beth Scott? Gloria Thompson? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two school of choice to open on June eighth, twenty-twenty-one and close October fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, Ms., Mrs. Kennedy, can you read that motion, please?
Okay, so just to give you a, a brief description, so you have an idea. We have to request and receive approval to expand our normal school of choice window. So, the government requires this. So we recommend that the Board of Education approve the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school of choice to open on June eighth, twenty-twenty-one and to close on October fifth, twenty-twenty-one. That gives us the most time to get the most students that we can get during that timeframe. We were approved for this, by the way.
And so we need a maker and support and then we can ask questions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Yeah, discussion, please. Any questions? Just, um, Ms. Thompson, go ahead.
How, how are we advertising to get these school of choice kids?
So, we will have, we will be placing ads in the paper, local paper, and then we also will, it's on our website. And we've had parents calling, asking already for next year, if we could start signing them up.
We are also producing, um, standalone flyers that we're gonna be mailing out on, uh, targeted areas. Again, this is just expanding the window to give us more time.
Okay, any other questions? I don't see any, so, Mary, can you call roll, please?
Mark Holcomb? Cindy Holder? Deborah Ott? Beth Scott? Gloria Thompson? Crystal Beaver? Rebecca Shambles? Motion passes.
Okay, next is the staff contracts. On, we have quite a few. Um, did we wanna do them as a group or by like central office versus drivers? What is, um, what is your pleasure? And the maker of the motion can decide how to handle it. Who wants to take it?
Madam President?
Mrs. Thompson?
Aren't, aren't you, uh, do we know if we're supposed to do each individual contract? Vote on it separately because they're individual contracts? I think we can. There's an individual name on each one. It's not a
And, and we can vote on it any way we want. So whoever is the maker is where we take this from.
I'll make the motion that we vote on it as a whole.
Okay, Crystal, you were saying each and every one of them altogether?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, is Mr. Field in the audience? Does he have anything that he wants to add to this?
Uh, I'm here. I don't have anything to add necessarily.
No, I'm sorry, you kind of.
No, I don't have anything to add unless, unless you have any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Do we have a total amount of contract with roll-ups and everything? All the contracts and it gives us hourly rates. But do we know what we're actually paying after insurance and all the other stuff? Do we know what we're, what a total amount on each contract is?
We, we kinda sent you the Excel on the, on individual, the differences, and then you would add, if an individual is getting a dollar raise, then normally you would add forty-seven cents to that dollar. And that would, um, add all of that. And I'll let Dr. Hill address finances, but again, typically on per dollar, you add forty-seven cents to the dollar and that would factor in everything.
I apologize if I missed something, but I didn't see that. I saw the chart you sent.
Yeah, that shows you the difference of where, what they were getting before and what we're.
And what they're getting now.
What we're proposing to you, yes.
But that just tells us their salaries. It didn't tell us.
Jamie, can you pull that up? I, I, did you send that to me? A total of?
I have the total number right here if you want me to read it.
Annual rate or something?
Be the total number of, of.
The total, the total number with, um, everyone is, including roll-ups, is fifty-five thousand, sixty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents.
That's for all of them combined with roll-ups.
All the employees that we're voting?
Everyone that you're voting on, the total value of all of them that you're voting on. Be, how much, Jamie, fifty-four thousand?
Fifty-five thousand, sixty-six dollars roughly.
Well, I find that amazing because aren't we paying one employee like forty-three thousand?
No, you, you asked about the change, you asked about the.
Increase. This is the increase.
Oh, that, the, the increase, okay. So the increase is costing us fifty-five thousand, okay.
And you have to keep in mind, we did eliminate one administrative position. Was the Director of Transportation is, which is absorbed by another position now.
Um, I guess I had two things and, and to be fair, Mr. Abdullah had, and I had, had a discussion in the Excel, um, worksheet was great. I still am struggling, him and, him and I maybe getting on the same page, so while we're all here. Um, it was my understanding that we were gonna set parameters on all these contracts. And we keep getting them. And, um, so, uh, we need to have a very definitive who's gonna be in charge of this because ultimately we're the ones that are fiscally responsible. And so, um, I don't, um, don't wanna belabor the point, but it's not a new point. And, um, I just think we should go into these knowing ahead of time what it is that you're going to offer. So, we know what we can, I wanna know that we can afford. Not that you could give me something, but know we can afford and know what the total number is. So that if somebody asks me, I, I don't care, I'm not asking to be part of the deliberations, but a part of the whole package. We used to do one meeting, give a number, let's in for instance, okay? Um, uh, ten thousand dollars, which is ludicrous, but just cuz it's an easy number. This is what we have to work with, with all the groups for the year. Make it happen. Then when you brought these pieces back, we knew they were part of that pu- that one whole puzzle. Do you kinda follow what I mean? So if we could get more on that, I would, uh, and I'll ask everybody else for input, but, um, I just think maybe we would all be better served. And I thought that's what we had agreed to, but maybe we didn't, so, um. What do we all think while we're sitting here very quickly cuz it's getting late?
I thought the individual contracts, I thought we gave him permission to negotiate.
Okay, that wasn't my understanding. That's why I'm asking.
I thought all these people were found to not currently or previously having contracts. And so this was basically just to make sure that we did have something in writing, um, to kind of make sure that we know where we stand, they know their rules, we know what we're, you know, obligated to do and that this was basically just documenting what they were currently expecting anyways.
Most of them were, yeah, are getting raises, but you know, there's one in particular that's a little significant as well. Gloria, go ahead.
Uh, you, I think I had the same understanding you did, that, that the board sets the parameters. And that's, we don't expect to negotiate, that's Angel's job. But we should be setting the parameters on how much we can spend on contracts and negotiating teams and stuff like that. Am I wrong?
I just kinda, I, I must have misunderstood. I thought we were talking about, um, collective bargaining agreements and, uh, new contracts, but I, I just, again, this is probably my fault for assuming that I, I thought I was presenting you non-new, these are not new, uh, employment contracts. And so what we did is we, we, we did comparables, remained comparables, but if you would like going forward, um, every year on any contract, if that's the wish of the board, we don't have a problem. We, we could just say, what do you, what do you think? Cost of inflation is three percent or five percent. we don't have a problem, we, we could just say, what do you, what do you think? Cost of inflation is three percent or five percent. But a, as, you know, we could, we could do that and then you could say, okay, Angel, don't go over five percent on any, any contract renewal, and then I'll have like my marching orders, uh, going forward. If that's something that you prefer as a whole on everything, we have no problem, um.
Yeah, I, I just want everybody to understand, so I'm not frustrated with you and you're not frustrated with me and we all are on the same page.
Yeah, I'm not frustrated.
Okay, uh, Ms. Scott, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, so, um, some of these contracts. Okay, first of all, I wish we didn't get sixteen contracts at one, at a meeting with an agenda this long, first of all. Second of all, a lot of these folks already had a yearly contract. It was like the bus drivers that didn't have a contract, correct?
And the.
We're just, you know.
The ESL.
Is that correct?
Yeah, the ESL Paris did not have a contract.
Right.
Offer letters.
Right, but like, the other folks, this is just a yearly.
Renewal.
Right, okay.
Okay, so, I don't know if we're going to get a consensus tonight, we're all getting tired. Um, so, uh, at, at any rate, we have what's in front of us, um. All contracts, one swoop. Any other questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Kennedy.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Cindy?
Yes, yes.
Arch, Rebecca Shambless?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam President, do you want a break? Do you need a break? I'm just checking on, I'm watching your faces as trustees and I'm just checking.
Um, I don't know, does anybody want time? I don't want to go much longer than that. We're all tired, but.
I'm, I'm good, I don't know.
I just want to get it done.
All right.
Yeah, and honestly, uh, i- if I go off camera, it's because I have to get up and move and I'm not going to carry around my iPad, but I'm in the room just to tell, so, go off camera, that's why.
Okay, cool. Um, then we're good, we'll continue, approve of EDU healthcare, physical therapy contract. And, let me look at. Uh, Mr. Steele, do you have some info on this that we need?
Uh, this contract was handled by, I believe, um.
Dr. Andrea.
I think this was, uh, Mr. Andre, yeah.
This is, oh, this is a, a yearly that we do with this company that does physical, um, um, PT, OT and some other um, support systems that we do every year that we present to the board.
Alrighty, and do we have a cost? I saw, I thought at one point.
Would you like me to read the description?
Page seventy-seven, I think.
Okay, so Edu Healthcare is being provided for the Board of Education for review. This is their contract. This contract is for physical therapy services for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to include. It also, this also includes our twenty-twenty-one summer school program because it falls within our school year. The rate is seventy-five dollars for not more than twenty hours a week paid through general funds with partial Medicaid refund and summer school, um, program to be paid through Esther's Grant.
Thank you. So, we have, we need a maker and support.
I'll make, I'll be the maker.
Thank you, support.
Support.
Who was that?
That was Debbie.
Okay, Debbie. And, any other discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Kennedy.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Action, motion passes.
Okay, um, approval of the Soylent Blazer Works contract. Uh, Mary, do you have that?
Yes, this contract is for occupational therapy services. Um, the other one was actually PT, this one's OT services for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, including our program this summer with the bill rate of sixty-nine dollars, ninety-one cents an hour for up to forty hours paid through general funds with partial Medicaid refund and this is also being covered through part of Esther's Grant.
Okay, I need a maker and support, please.
I'll be the maker.
All right, Ms. Scott, support?
I'll support, Mrs. Thompson.
Any questions? Ms. Chambless, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to know, I had emailed asking that on it, it says minimum hours and then it says up to forty. So is the minimum hours forty or is it zero to forty?
It's zero, it's zero forty, it's up to forty hours.
Okay.
Up to.
Wouldn't that depend, Mr. Abdullah, on how many students need occupational therapy?
Yeah, they have to get a, a script. It's not like they just come in, um, and they get, you know, occupational. It's actually a process that they have to go through in order to qualify for that.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing no hands, Mary Kennedy.
Rebecca Shambless?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next on the agenda, um.
So, the next thing we added for holidays coming up.
Okay.
So Board of Education meeting's schedule as follows. So we have Fourth of July, which is being observed on July fifth. That's the first Monday of the month. We would like to move it to July sixth. Then we also have Labor Day coming up, we're going to do them all in one time. Labor Day is coming up in September and we would delay it one day to the Tuesday due to Labor Day being Monday. So the new dates would be July sixth and September seventh, that way we can post it on our website and everything's set before in advance.
So we need a maker and support.
I'll make it.
Your Holcomb?
I'll support it.
Was that Mrs. Beaver?
No, it's me.
Sorry.
It's okay.
And, any other discussion? Seeing none. Mary, you're up.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next, uh, is approval of August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one is the first day of school for students for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Mrs. Kennedy, do you have any info on that?
All I know is that due to COVID, that, that's why they were requesting earlier to start date than the day after Labor Day.
Uh, we, we're recommending the thirtieth, uh, Madam President, because if you notice, our extended summer school plan uh, just barely gets out on the thirteenth and we do need, um, our staff for their mental health time to recu-, you know, recuperate from that. And, and it's the, uh, Board's prerogative to set the start date of, um, the start of school and parents need to, uh, parents need to plan uh, for their summer vacations and stuff like that. Everything else is bargainable with the teachers' union. Um, however, the, um, the start of the year is, uh, is reserved for the right of the school board to decide on. We're recommending August thirtieth as the first day for students to re, to school.
Okay, so I need a maker and support.
Madam President, I make the motion.
Was that Debbie?
Yes. Mrs. I, yep.
Okay, thank you. And support?
I'll support.
Miss.
I beat you to it, Mr. Holcomb.
Okay, any discussion? I can't see a thing, my, my screen went blank, so you have to speak up. I don't hear anything, so, Mrs. Kennedy, go ahead.
Okay, Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yep, yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, approval of the Keys Grace Charter Amendment. Uh, Mr. Abdullah had, I'm going to assume you're taking that.
Yes, um, so we are recommending and we have reviewed, uh, the analysis, uh, the academic trends of Keys Grace Charter. Um, and let me just share a few, uh, points of, um, academic progress, uh, with the board. They have, um, in two thousand nineteen, forty-three percent of their students have, uh, that have taken the WEDA have scored a four point five or a higher on their score. Now, in order for you to exit, um, ESL and, or, uh, for you to be, uh, counted as a flip, you need a, an overall, uh, score of four point eight. So they're, they're, they're right there, um, demonstrating growth. In twenty-twenty, uh, forty-nine point eight percent of their students demonstrated, um, a four point five or higher. Uh, going back from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen, um, percent of E, English language learners taking WEDA um, had a progress, they went from sixteen percent to twenty-four percent to twenty-nine percent. What I really like about, um, the charter agreement is that they're providing a support for a clientele uh, of refugees and immigrants that are coming to the country, um, three, four, sometimes five grades behind. Um, and just to give you a little bit of understanding, it takes uh, for basic intercommunication skill, the ability to speak English and where might cause you to think, oh, this kid is good, he doesn't need ESL, that could be six months to a year. But to actually acquire cognitive academic language proficiency takes fourteen years. And so, um, they are servicing students and their students are growing, they might not be at grade level. However, they are demonstrating years worth of growth and that's all we could ask, you know, having someone, um, coming to you at a second grade level. They're not going to go from second grade to eighth grade, right? They're gonna, but if they could go from a, a, a year's worth of growth, then over time, they will get caught up. So my, my recommendation to the board is that we accept um, this, uh, um, charter agreement and I'm very pleased with the data that I reviewed uh, and that I'm reviewing with you. So if you have any questions for me about the, um, data that could help answer, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, can we, um, uh, do we have the motion and then we can have discussion, how about that? Um.
Madam President, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Okay, Mrs. I, Mrs. Thompson? And, any questions? Mrs. Thompson?
I'm just curious, what is the agreement? It says Grace Charter Agreement. I didn't get a copy of the agreement.
We are their fiscal, yeah, you did, uh, Mr. Urban sent it to you, he sent it to all of us, um, you had to download it, yep, remember when? Dropbox, it was in that agreement. He also gave us some, some information that, as attorney-client privileged, that he, he said, shared. Right, uh, basically, we would be, we have to be the authorizer for the charter, right? And we are their fiscal agent, so the money flows through us, we do have a, uh, we do get a three percent, um, I believe it's three percent, uh, for being their fiscal agent. And currently their charter, uh, agreement expires in twenty-twenty-five, uh, but we really, the, the rationale is they're not in direct competition with us, right? They provide a support to a clientele that we don't. Ninety, um, I would say eighty percent of their, um, students are either Wayne or Macomb County.
Okay.
And so that they provide door-to-door service, uh, where they pick up the students. We don't provide that door-to-door service. Uh, without having that, there's a certain, um, um, group of, of, uh, Arab-Americans and Keldean-Americans, they're not being serviced, that Keys Grace does service, um, and service as well.
Okay, um, Mrs. Scott, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Abdullah, you brought up, uh, my, that was going to be my question. So their current contract doesn't expire till twenty-twenty-five. Why do we, why are we looking at this now?
Uh, we have a great relationship and, um, I, I don't see why we shouldn't extend, um, it, it benefits us, it gives us a ten-year trajectory of revenue that's coming in that is, uh, averaging a hundred thirty thousand per year, and if you factor that in for ten years, that's one point three million dollars that, why wouldn't you? I mean, if I could do twenty years, I would do twenty years. Um, but you would want that revenue coming in, it's a great partnership. Oh, that, that's my recommendation.
Okay, um, Ms. Chambless, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to ask a question, but I think Crystal might be asking it because I was asking it earlier, um. It was in my email, Mr. Abdullah, um, why are, what does it cost us to be the fiscal guidance for them or whatever?
Costs you nothing.
I'm drawing a blank, I'm sorry, but.
To be their fiscal agent.
Yes, thank you.
Charter, we actually get three percent of all their FDE money. So we get, we, we get about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year just by being their fiscal agent. The money comes to us, we pass it down, we keep our three percent.
And, uh, this is separate from the sale?
Absolutely, has not, yeah, absolutely.
But, but once the sale goes through, it definitely isn't our benefit.
It's absolutely, absolutely, it's, 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 you know, it's there, it's, there's not a direct competition or direct threat. Um, and so that's a great, it's a, it's a win-win for both parties.
Got it. Um, but Ms. Scott, then, Ms. Beaver?
Uh, Mr. Abdullah, uh, was it their idea or our idea to look at this, redo this contract before it actually expired?
Um, I'm not sure how the discussion started, uh, uh, it might have been, uh, their recommendation, but I can't just, um, off the top of my head, I, I, I guess, I don't want to guess. I, I believe it was their, uh, recommendation at first, um, however, I, I don't, I can't speak different to that, Ms. Scott.
And, Mrs. Beaver, did you have another question?
Uh, well, you had asked me one about is the extension of the charter agreement depending on the sale of Edison? And then, um, my other question, Mr. Abdullah, is, I know you had said, so I just wanted to confirm, we don't have any expenditures with having them, correct?
Currently, we have expenditures, we have to pay all their utilities currently right now. Uh, but one, with, when we complete the sale of the building, we have no expenditures at all whatsoever. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, Mrs. Kennedy, you are up.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Um, next up, personnel report, Mr. Steele, you're up.
Right. Yes, we have a few new hires, uh, we have Chris, uh, Ubelor, who's a teacher at Wilkinson Middle School, he's starting next school year. Um, Reem Bakayou is a bus driver, she was in the district previously, uh, left and came back. Shante Johnson's a new custodian at the high school, she started today. Um, a couple resignations, uh, Donna Wertheimer, our payroll specialist. Ben Harwood, uh, middle school principal, Sarah Cummings, district nurse. Uh, two retirements, Linda Herket, a paraprofessional at MES and, uh, Leslie Rennie Kaganbine, uh, the principal at Madison High School. Uh, that's it.
Okay, so we need maker and support, please.
Madam President, I'll make the motion.
Mrs. Ott, support, please.
I'll support this path.
Ms. Scott, support, discussion. Um, I guess I would just like to add up, I've known, um, personally, uh, Linda Herket for multiple decades. And she has been, um, a, a wonderful person and friend. And I know she was, um, that she will be missed. And, mm, Mrs. Kika Biden at the high school, I believe I was around when she first came, so, uh, all the years that they were here, um, I saw the good that they did. I know Mr. Harwood is leaving, I wish him well, um. And, uh, I just wanna say that especially to the retirees, I, I wish you good health to enjoy those days ahead. Um, anybody else? Mr. Holcomb, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Leslie at the high school, I wish you the best luck in your retirement. Uh, Ben Harwood, uh, thank you so much for what you do with the operators engineers at the middle school, I appreciate it. You're a good man, I wish you the best luck for your new job and, uh, and old Mrs. Harket, yes, I think her daughter and my daughter went to school together, I wish you the best of luck also.
Okay, Ms. Beaver, go ahead.
Not gonna go into big detail because I don't wanna start sobbing, but I just wanna let, um, Miss Leslie know how much we love her and how I wish her the very best.
Okay, stand, ah. Okay, I don't wanna minimize that by saying is that all, but, um, can we call for a vote, please?
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
No.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, next is the check register approval, and I believe that the number I have in front of me um, has been updated, so Mrs. Kennedy, can we have the final number, please?
Which number are you, the monthly expenditures?
Yes, uh, yeah, I thought that it was updated.
Yes, the number I have is two million, four hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Mary, will you break it down for the board?
Okay, so accounts payable, the expenditures for the month of May for accounts payable was two hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars and eleven cents. Payroll came out to three hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Wire transfers were four hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars and fifty-three cents. And the wired, uh, debt wire, the SBLF was one million, three hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars, seventy-five cents for the total of two million, four hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
So that big number, Madam President, is the debt services one, that's why, um, just to wanna make sure that's, that's not.
Okay, uh, we can ask a question once we get a maker and support, so do we have one of each?
I'll be, I'll make the motion.
All right, and support, please.
I'll support.
I'm not sure who, who was talking, Mr. Holcomb? Oh, Gloria, okay, Mrs. Thompson, sorry. And, um, okay, uh, I'm gonna ask the first obvious question, debt services. Can we explain that, please?
Yes, I can. Uh, SBLF stands for School Loan Loan Fund, um, excuse me. The district bor- borrowed funding from the Michigan Department of Treasury in the past, and we have to pay that back. So, uh, we had to pay back one point three million dollars. And that's what you see, uh, right there, we paid it out in May. And so, you know, we have to put it on, uh, we have to include it.
Awesome, okay, any other questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Kennedy, can you call roll, please?
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
No.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
No.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, next we have committee reports. Uh, GRC is first one up.
We have none, I'm sorry, I, I apologize.
Okay, next, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee.
That would be me, and I haven't attended a meeting since I decided to stay on the board on that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I thought, Ms. Thompson, that you stepped down and I took your spot from Rebecca with the DEI.
This is for the city.
Yeah, this is, this is.
You said DEI.
So we need an, you're on the, you're talking about the HREC, Gloria?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is.
There's so many going on and it's so late.
I don't think, uh, I don't think we were aware of that, but then that needs to be added to this list on the agenda.
Actually a city.
It, it's actually a city one, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I know, but.
I feel ya.
The HREC is requesting for a school board member to be on it.
Gloria.
All right, then it needs to be added to the list.
Be added to the list.
You got it.
Got it, okay, uh, brain fog, sorry. Um, okay, so no meeting, parks and rack.
I, their meetings are coming up this month, and I'll report when I go to the next meeting.
Okay, starting on board comments, let's start with Mrs. Shambles this time.
Um, I just wanted to say a huge congratulations to the Gager family. Um, he is one of my son's favorite teacher, and they welcomed a baby girl in this week. And the Colley family also welcomed a newborn baby recently. I wanted to say a huge congratulations to the graduates of twenty twenty-one. Um, I attended their ceremony as the first time as a board member. And I couldn't believe, like, I got teary-eyed, muffled times for even students I didn't know. Um, they were just beautiful, they were so, they were smiling from ear to ear, they were just magical. And some of them danced when they got their diploma, and some of them, you know, did like little things, and the crowd just erupted. It was like hundreds of people at a football game, like, they just went crazy, I can't even describe it because I never expected it. And, um, I know they had a rough two years, but they came through and they did it. And I never did, like, you did something that really is a big deal. People think that graduating high school is just something you do, no, it's an accomplishment, it is something you guys should be so proud of. Because honestly, whether I know you or not, I am so proud of every student that walked across that stage, um, the other day. As for Miss Leslie, um, and resigning, she is an amazing human being, she's not just a great educator, she's not just a great principal, she's just a good person. And so, when it comes to losing staff members, it's always hard, but to lose good people, kind people, gentle people, she's it, it's a loss, Mr. Harwood, my sons are devastated. I don't even know if my son Colton will ever be the same, um. And then, Miss Cummings, thank you for everything you've done to guide the district through COVID and everything else. As for everyone else, I know you're probably amazing people, you're definitely amazing people because I've heard amazing things about you, I don't know you, and I feel unfortunate for that. But good luck in everything you do, um, and everything you go on to do. And then lastly, I just wanted to say that I emailed questions like I was asked to do, they didn't get answered. And then I asked for invoices in the manner I was asked to do, and I didn't get them. So, I'm trying my best to help real, build a bridge in this group. But I don't wanna have to, like, save everything up and explode on mediation days, so I just wanna say, I'm trying my best here, and if I'm asking for questions in advance, like I'm asked, I want them answered. And if I ask for invoices, I would appreciate getting them, that's it. That's all.
Okay, um, next up, Mr. Holcomb.
Yeah, uh, first of all, I'd like to congratulate all the seniors too, that was, that was fun, I enjoyed that too. Um, and I'd like to congratulate the three, uh, middle school students at, uh, one one two hundred and fifty dollar gift card and two one fifty dollar gift cards. They, they did awesome at the, at the Operators Engineers, uh, Career Day. Now, Mr. Abdullah has been the superintendent for two and a half years. And there's three board members that's been on the school board for two and a half years. One's been on there for one and a half years, and the other one's been on there for half, or the other three's been on for a half. And I've been hearing about the, the roof, how bad it's been, been at least three years. Okay, well, why don't we look at the board the previous three years then? And start putting some blame on them instead of this board here. Cut us some slack, we got us off the state, uh, watch list. Now we can move forward, we're gonna meet for a bond, it's gonna happen, people, cut us some slack, please. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Scott, you're up.
Okay, a couple, well, not a couple of things, it's a few things. Um, I'm gonna say this again, this agenda is too long, we're getting information, we're, we're not getting them. I, I hate to be surprised, I'm sure everybody else hates to get surprised. I'm gonna second this with Rebecca, I did send some questions, I was looking for that, for that to be sent in an email that I, they never got answered. Um, I want to congratulate, uh, the, the softball and baseball team for a good season. I wanna congratulate, um, on a good season to the four, uh, times hundred relay. Um, they, you know, like Mr. Abdullah had, they went to state finals, they did a great job. I wanna congratulate the class of twenty twenty-one, their parents, teachers, and the staff that helped them on their journey. Shout out to Miss Leslie for a great job, you are and will be missed, um. I can't even imagine next year at the high school without you. Um, I wanna thank Mr. Ben Harwood, um, and congratulations on his new journey. The impact that you've made on students did not go unnoticed, and I am sad to see you go. Sarah Cummings, um, in my opinion, best nurse we've had in this district, I'm sad to see her go, um. Thanks for all your help during a scary time for everyone in the district, um, especially, you know, questions that I've had, um, with Amelia, uh, good luck on your new journey. Thank you to everyone that's hung out with us and supported us tonight because it's been a long night again. There you go, that's it.
Alrighty, Ms. Beaver, you are up next.
Um, I just wanted to thank our staff, I know we're ending an extremely hard year. I know with COVID, it hasn't been easy, but, um, they've done an amazing job this year. To our two thousand twenty-one graduates, I wanna congratulate you guys again, um, it was truly humbled to be by your side at your ceremony. To our parents, we've almost made it through the year, it's almost summertime, hang in there. And then, um, lastly, I kinda added this at the end. Mr. Abdullah had, I know that they had mentioned during the summer school presentation that they were gonna be collecting some data at the beginning, middle, and end. Um, I was wondering if you could share that data with us after summer school, so we could see what our amazing team accomplished during that, and that's all.
Alrighty, Mrs. Thompson, you're up next.
Um, I just wanna congratulate the class of twenty twenty-one, I was not able to attend. I was at my own grandson's graduation, who graduated summa cum laude, by the way. We're very proud of him. He's already been accepted into the veterinary school at Michigan State, so um, I'd like to congratulate all the retirees, I know what a wonderful time in your life that is because I'm also a retiree. Uh, Mr. Harwood, congratulations on your new job. Sarah, like everybody said, we're gonna be sad to see you go. Um, other than that, have a good, good evening, cuz it's getting late.
Alrighty, and with that, Mrs. Ott.
I just wanted to congratulate the class twenty twenty-one, I was not able to attend this year, but I've attended in the past, and it is very humbling, and, uh, I did enjoy it. I wanna welcome all the new hires to the district, and congratulations to Linda and to Leslie on their retirements. I'm semi-retired, so I, I semi-feel what you're gonna be feeling. Um, Ben, Donna, and Sarah, congrats, uh, good luck on your new positions. Um, wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight and, uh, sticking with us. And I, I would like to reiterate, and our, or thank Mark, Mr. Holcomb, for his words, because it is true. Uh, you know, we have tried our best, we didn't vote in ways people wanted us to vote, and we've taken a beating. But hey, we're public servants, we got tough skin, but you're right. We're doing our best, and, uh, we will continue to try and do our best for this district and the students. And that's it, have a good night.
Thank you, and I will, uh, wrap this up. I wanna say as far as the roof and the bond, um, and people that are, are concerned. Um, of course, we want safe buildings for our kids. Um, I wanted safe buildings when my three kids went through, and they were. Um, safe is the key word. My understanding is still, this school is safe. And that's where the peril lies, and getting flowery and overemphasizing. And we, we will fix it, no one ever said that we weren't, how we got there was the discussion. Um, so anybody that thinks that any of the seven of us sitting here wants their children or our staff in peril, it, that's just a ludicrous statement or assumption, and it's really unfair. Um, Mr. Abdullah had, has never said or ascertained that he wants his staff in an unsafe building, it, um, the, it, you made your point, we understood. Um, you can pick it all you want, it doesn't change that maybe our years of experience in life on, you know, uh, our life skills that we're bringing maybe have a little bit of justification in our thought process as well. Um, I guess, no one here is giving us the benefit of the doubt, um, that's okay. I feel confident in, in what I've done, and I know where we're going. The other thing is, the invoices, um, can be gotten from Mrs. Thompson at any time. We've made that very clear, that's the process. If you don't get it, let me know, I would be glad to follow up. If we have email problems, I was out of town. Um, if it was emailed to me, I didn't get it, I was out of town and incommunicado. If we need to still work on that, then we need to still work on that, um. This is obviously a two-way street and we're gonna continue to work hard to make it better. I truly do believe that, or I wouldn't be staying here four hours in, you know, to the meeting ending. With that, I would like to hear a motion to close this meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I was gonna try to be into it, Mark, but I won't take that one from you.
You already, you already have your pajamas on, don't you, Martin?
Mr. Holcomb's the maker and Mrs. Scott is the support. Any discussion? Alrighty, Mrs. Kennedy.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes, meeting adjourns at ten fifty-eight.
Mary.
Mary, everyone, okay, at the same time, Mary, and the meeting at the same time for everyone.